We'll now call to order the April 18th Planning and Zoning Meeting with the first item on our agenda, the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, alterations to our agenda? If not, I'm looking for a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We carry unanimously. We shall now move on to our minutes. First are the minutes for the regular meeting. They're not in chronological order. We're doing a regular meeting on the 21st. So if anyone has any changes or suggestions, now's the time to voice them. Otherwise, a motion would be in order to adopt those minutes.
So moved.
There's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the minutes for 21st of March, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that carries unanimously. We are now on to the Planning and Zoning Minutes from the work session on March 14th. Same rules apply. I'm all ears.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of March 14th, 2016.
There's a motion. Does anyone second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that carries unanimously. We are now on to the Planning and Zoning Minutes from the work session on March 14th. Same rules apply. I'm all ears.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of March 14th, 2016.
There's a motion. Does anyone second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also carries unanimously. And that's the easy part of our meeting this evening. So we will now move on to our cases involving a public hearing. And before we do that, I'll just lay out a few of the rules we adopt here that we operate by on the public hearing. The first thing that will happen is we'll have a member of our staff come and introduce the case. After that, the applicant will have time to speak. The applicant will have 10 minutes, either the applicant or their designee. After they are done, we will allow the public hearing to open. At that point, to expedite coming to speak to the public hearing, it'd be nice if you were over on that side of the room, but it's not necessary. We'll have folks come to the podium. Please give a card to our clerk. When you show up at the podium, it would be very nice for you to start with your name and then go on after that. You will have five minutes, and we have a little timer there for you that gives you green for the first four minutes and 30 seconds, amber or yellow for the next 30, and then finally red, and we will yank the rug out from under you at that point. We're doing that because, especially in cases where there's an awful lot of opinions, pro and con, we really want to make sure everyone has the same fair amount of time to speak. So we're pretty rigid about that five-minute limit. If you'd also be so kind as to stand at the podium lectern that is not currently occupied, that would be the one to our right, to your left. That would make it much easier for our camera folks to keep track of you when you come to do your speaking. So I'd appreciate that as well. Of course, when you come to speak to us, we ask you to be concise, not have a whole bunch of people show up and repeat the same thing. If you have a bunch of folks with you, one of you can make one point, the next one can make the next one. That gives you more time to get the whole thing across. If you'd like to elect or just name one spokesperson to come and point out how all the people you're speaking for, that's also acceptable to do. We do not interact with you at all. We're not going to answer any questions you pose to us. We will look at any documents you want to give to us, but we're not going to interact with you. That's your time to address us, and we won't waste any of your time by going back with you. After everyone's had their say, we'll close the public hearing. Then we'll get our chance to talk amongst ourselves about what we're going to do. Have I missed anything? I did that all in one breath, by the way. So, okay, so we're very first item with the public hearing this evening is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 15 CPA 11. Good evening, Ms. Gruber. How are you tonight?
Fantastic. I hope you're doing well.
We are.
Good evening. This is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment request for 6.65 acres on Maynard Crossing Court. Maynard Crossing Court is about a quarter mile north of the intersection of High House Road and Northwest Maynard Road. You can see the site outlined in yellow. Here's a zoom-in aerial view of the site, so you can see that it has residential development north and west and retail development east and south. Notification of the Plan Amendment request was sent to property shown in yellow on this map. And this slide shows stream buffers and floodways around the subject property. According to the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan, there is an existing and proposed Greenway and street-side trail network near the site. Both High House Road and Northwest Maynard Road are existing major thoroughfares. And there are three C-Trans routes available at the stop at the Maynard Crossing Shopping Center. As per the Towne and Carey Land Use Plan, the current land use designation for the property is commercial. It is located in the Maynard Crossing Neighborhood Activity Center. The applicant proposes to remove the property from the Neighborhood Activity Center and change the land use designation to office and industrial. The Land Development Ordinance cites four criteria to consider when determining whether or not a Plan Amendment is necessary. Staff believes item two, new issues, needs, or opportunities, is met with the statement that dwindling, there is a dwindling light industrial land supply in this area. Tonight's hearing and action on this Plan Amendment is unusual since, under an exceptional code provision, the Board will be considering a rezoning case for this same site also this evening. Since this is highly unusual, we wanted to point out how the evaluation of a Comprehensive Plan Amendment differs from the evaluation of a rezoning. So on this slide, first, Comprehensive Plan Amendment should be considered on its own merits, separate from a rezoning case. The question we should ask ourselves is, what would we most like to see on this property in the long range, 20 to 30 years? And while considering that question, think about all the different range of uses that could be supported by the amendment, since sites can be rezoned multiple times over time. At the Town Council Public Hearing in February for this case, the applicant's representative noted there is a power line easement on the subject property. He also said the applicant had additional meetings to work with the adjacent neighbors, and no other citizens spoke at that public hearing. For the staff analysis, when we look at property in an activity center that someone wishes to remove, the property needs to be on an edge, because you can't, it wouldn't make sense to remove property that's in the middle of an activity center. So that piece is in place. Also, whether the property has the current land use designation of commercial in the activity center or office industrial out of the activity center, a reasonable transition must be made between whatever is developed there and the existing residential development. Also, there are two potential development constraints that are worth pointing out. First, the site has limited visibility from Maynard Road, and on this slide, Maynard Road runs top right-hand corner, that's where the road is. There's limited visibility there, and also the light gray hatched area that goes through the site that shows the transmission line easement. So with that in place, that forces development up closer to Maynard Crossing Court and creates a wider space between Maynard Crossing Court and that development and the existing residential developments. Staff believes that either land use would be reasonable for this property. However, on balance and with the development constraints, we do recommend approval of this Comprehensive Plan Amendment request. So this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to make any comments.
Thank you, Meredith. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant Stein Investment Group. I've got representatives of Stein here with me as well to answer any questions you all might have. As Meredith made mention of, this is, we've got two things before you tonight. One is a rezoning, and one is a land use plan amendment. We wouldn't be seeking the land use plan amendment if we didn't also have the heavily-conditioned zoning case as a companion to it. So with the Board's permission, I think I would like to reserve most of my presentation to the zoning portion of this. I certainly don't disagree with anything Meredith presented from a land use plan standpoint, but quite frankly, without the heavily-conditioned zoning case, we wouldn't be seeking a land use plan amendment. So if it's okay with you all, I'd like to reserve our comments for the zoning portion.
Sure.
That concludes the presentation.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, not for the rezoning. So would anyone like to speak to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment? I see no one rising to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing. We are now open for Board questions of staff and applicant. None? If not, would anyone be interested in making a motion with regard to this Comprehensive Plan Amendment? And I'll call your attention to the sample motions we have sitting before us. We have the new procedures to keep in mind. So if anyone would be interested in making a motion, we can certainly discuss that.
I'll make a motion. I'm going to use the Comprehensive Plan Amendment motion. I don't think we need one of the new ones yet. I move that the Board forward case number 15 CPA 11 to Town Council with recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, please.
I've seen this case a couple of times and looked at it pretty thoroughly. It looks like a really good use of the land to me. I was a little hesitant about the land use, the change in the land use plan. I was thinking it might be like another Mayfair, but in this case, staff said that they were okay with the change, so we'll just go with a straight approval.
Yeah, looking at this case and the rezoning or the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, given the constraint that's already there with the transmission lines and actually some natural buffers that are almost already in place as a result, and that this parcel's been vacant for a long, long time, it seems like a good use, appropriate use for what's being proposed.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything they would like to add to the discussion on this motion? No? Then I will call it to a vote. All those in favor of approval of 15 CPA 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. The motion carries unanimously. We are on to item number two of our agenda. And that is the Maynard, whoa, that's the Maynard Crossing rezoning? Yeah, I read it right. Now the accompanying rezoning.
Good evening. This is a public hearing on the rezoning request associated with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment you just considered. And I would just remind you that the decision on the rezoning request is completely independent of your, any action on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Again, the vicinity map showing the location of the property. The existing zoning on the site is general commercial conditional use and mixed-use overlay district. The proposed zoning is industrial conditional use with removal from the mixed-use overlay district. There are several proposed zoning conditions. The land use would be limited to mini storage and outdoor storage with a maximum building height of 35 feet and a black aluminum or chain-link fence that would enclose at a minimum the parking and storage area. There were also several conditions that were added after the Town Council hearing, which is why this is a hearing before you tonight, that would limit the maximum floor area to 120,000 square feet, specify that there would be no roll-up type doors that would face the adjacent subdivisions, and then there's some standards related to the architectural standards in our community appearance manual that would provide more restrictions than otherwise required. Again, the land use plan currently is commercial, and the proposed plan designation, office industrial. And you've seen these based on the same site constraints. There are no stream buffers on the site. This shows the parks and recreation facilities in the area, the transportation system and transit facilities. This is the map showing the parcels that were notified of the public hearing. There were no speakers at the Council Public Hearing. There were some questions from Council members regarding the road connection to Waydale Drive. That concludes staff's comments. And following the applicant's comments will be available, or and the public hearing will be available for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Once again, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Board, Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant Stein Investment Group. As Mary indicated, this is the zoning piece of this puzzle, seeking to rezone this property from general commercial conditional use to industrial with fairly strict conditions. And when I say fairly strict conditions, that was something, and just for your all's edification, we had a total of three neighborhood meetings. We reached out to the neighborhoods on multiple occasions. I was a little surprised we didn't get more feedback. I was pleasantly surprised, quite frankly, that we didn't get more feedback. But I think after we had a couple of meetings initially, and Ms. Adler was at our neighborhood meeting, I believe, that was here, that was fairly well-attended. And I think once folks started to realize that the conditions were only going to permit self-storage facility and started to have some questions answered with respect to connectivity, which you all are well aware is really a site plan issue, doesn't have much to do with the zoning, and everybody's hands are kind of tied at the zoning stage with respect to connectivity. All I can suppose is that folks' interest in the case dwindled quickly once they realized, okay, this is kind of what we're getting as part of this zoning case. As you could see, the conditions that have been offered are fairly extensive. They speak to building height, as Mary mentioned, fencing, maximum square footage. I do think it's important to note that after the public hearing, we didn't receive any negative comments at the public hearing, and my client still added conditions to the zoning case. And that was in an effort to help you all and help ultimately the Council as well and the community as a whole understand what the intended use is. And everybody knows it's a mini storage use. What we were concerned is making sure that folks understood this wasn't your 20th-century mini storage. It's a 21st-century style, what I call 21st-century mini storage use. It looks more like an office building. And so while we don't have pictures that paint that picture, we have attempted with working with the staff to come up with conditions that start to create ultimately a use that folks will be happy is located there. As was mentioned previously, I'm going to see if I can scroll to the, I want to show the site constraints briefly. The constraints. Yeah, that works perfectly. As was mentioned previously, there are significant site constraints associated with development of anything on the site. Well, I'm going to do my best. Yoga days are behind me. In addition to the transmission easement which you see traversing here, the transmission easement essentially creates a portion of the property that's undevelopable, because you can't really get to it for any meaningful purpose, and it's going to be buffered as part of the town's requirements. Obviously, there's significant limitations on what you can do in transmission easements, as you all are probably aware of progress. Duke Progress is pretty strict on what you can do, and they're becoming more strict in what you can do within in those areas. Also important to note, there is going to be a roadway connection required at the time of site plan. And so you can see where it's stubbed, and there was a question at the public hearing about whether it was posted and whether it has been posted, and it has. There's a sign here that says future roadway connection. But if you imagine kind of the most direct path from here to here is going to come through here, and you're going to essentially link up those two. So you're creating another portion of the site that, for all intents and purposes, you can't really put anything meaningful on this small section of the site. And this area in here is an existing, what I'll characterize as a spillway. I think our engineers are cringing when I refer to it as a spillway. I think it's a, it was, it was a temporary stormwater facility to receive stormwater firm improvements in the remainder of Maynard Crossing Court that has never been converted to a permanent stormwater facility. That's obviously something that's going to happen as part of future development of the site. And then the last constraint that I'll mention is that because we're requesting an industrial zoning and we're next to residential, there's a code-required 80-foot buffer for any use on the property. And so, and we can't count the areas within the transmission easement towards that buffer. So what that creates is a fairly, it takes six and a half acres of land and shrinks it down real quickly in terms of what you can do on the site. The good news is that because of the buffer, because of the transmission easement, because of the existing vegetation, there's going to be great buffering of any use on this site to the adjacent neighborhoods, especially with an industrial zoning. Because again, once you put industrial, regardless of the conditions, once you put industrial next to existing neighborhoods, code's going to kick in that 80-foot buffer requirement no matter what. So what you're left with, and just for your all's edification, the primary building will be located generally in this vicinity here. I mean, that's once you start to factor out all the buffers and setbacks and whatnot, you're really left with a very small parcel. As you all are also aware, especially against neighborhoods, self-storage uses are very low-traffic generators, which makes them an attractive use. They're also very quiet neighbors to have. So from a, you know, would you rather have an office? Would you rather have retail? Or would you rather have a self-storage? The traditional response is, I don't want to see self-storage. But as they've evolved, I think they've become a lot more palatable to neighborhoods in general. From my client's perspective, this is a dynamite location, because the people who would be using the site are located within close proximity. And I've got a self-storage facility that I drive 15 minutes to, and I haven't been to it in probably over a year, which is embarrassing, but it's true. You know, self-storage becomes an extension of your house, and you just never go to it. So we think there's a lot of reasons why development of this site at its current zoning is very constrained and very challenged. We think there's a lot of reasons why moving towards a self-storage use is ultimately going to be a really, really positive use and a benefit to the overall neighborhood. So with that, we're here to answer any questions that you all have, and we would respectfully request you all's favorable recommendation of the case. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for this rezoning case. Would anyone like to address this board on this particular rezoning case? Come on down. I think I see a few people. Yes, over there if you please, and also fill out that card. You can do that afterwards if you like.
Hi, my name is Nancy Cohen, and I'm with Highland Oaks. I'm in Highland Oaks neighborhood, and I'm on their Board of Directors. And we have been here before. We went to the first meeting. And I, you know, a lot of the changes that they're making now with the buffer and the 80-foot buffer is going to make it a little bit easier on us. I don't feel comfortable opening up that road to Waydale Way. That, I think, is one of the biggest issues that we have in Highland Oaks. We prefer that road to stay closed. We don't want that traffic coming through the neighborhood. You've got two dead ends, and even now, you have people trying to get out and realizing they're hitting dead ends. If they make a left or if they make a right and go down to either Raven Dale or Huntsworth, they're going to hit dead ends, and we're going to have unnecessary traffic in our neighborhood. We've got a lot of kids that play in that area on that street, and I think it would be very dangerous to have cars coming into our neighborhood. The statement about the two neighborhoods having active use of those self-storage units, I don't think there's any merit in that. That's just something that developers saying that, yeah, great, you've got two neighborhoods, they're going to use it all the time. I don't think we're going to use it. I don't think we want it. But it does sound like it's a no-win situation. But if I have anything to say, it's about opening up that road, which I understand is a no-brainer, that we're not going to be able to stop it. But I do like to make my case on behalf of my neighborhood that we don't want the road open. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this public hearing? Yes, sir.
Hi there. I'm John Akis. I live at 701 Huntsworth Place. I'm directly behind this site. And I think we all appreciate that, based on where this is going, of the different flavors of industrial use, this is probably the most palatable one that we could have. I have to echo some of the concerns on the connectivity with the road on Waydale Way. And what I wonder is if maybe there's a win-win situation here, something that's more pedestrian in nature rather than vehicles. As was mentioned earlier, just about every corner there has got kids in the front yard all the time. I'm a parent of three of them, and the connectivity, the people that it really helps, it's a pretty small number of homes that are going to say, wow, I can get over to the Kroger and save two minutes on my drive versus what I was doing before. I think when we think about trade-offs, that the trade-off there is just not proportionate. I think, but something more pedestrian in nature could be very positive. It would link right up with the Black Creek Greenway, which actually has a proposed path to come right there on Maynard. If you look on the map, that's proposed. You could basically connect to it and create a pedestrian path and have an entrance to that Greenway right there, and that really turned this into an amenity for the neighborhood rather than something that's creating new traffic and possibly other problems. And that's all I have.
Would anyone else like to speak? I see no one else, so I will call this public hearing closed, and now we can ask questions of the applicant and the staff. Anyone like to begin? Go right ahead. Yes?
Is, can we go back to that last slide, please? The aerial view? Okay, I just want to get some clarification. Is there some sort of a requirement that this stubbed-out thoroughfare be played through here? Is it required?
The ordinance does require connection to that because of, because that road stub connects all the way to the property line. It is a requirement in the ordinance and can't be waived at the time of the rezoning. However, the applicant does have the option if, at the time of the site plan approval, a request could be made to waive that connection, but it would need to go before Town Council at a quasi-judicial hearing in connection with the site plan review. There's not, there's not an option to address that at the time of the rezoning.
So if we approved this tonight, we would also be, it would be with the understanding and the assumption that this would necessarily have to be completed unless what you just stated.
Unless waived. It would be under the assumption that all of the requirements of the Land Development Ordinance and the proposed zoning conditions would be met, and the connection is a requirement of the Land Development Ordinance unless it would be waived by Council through a quasi-judicial action.
And as a follow-up question, if you go out away from the end of the stubout point to the road that it tees with, where does that road lead to? What street?
Well, this is...
No, no, down.
This street?
No. If you take your pointer to the area where the road stubs out...
In Highland Oaks.
Highland Oaks.
Oh, this is...
And you take it all the way over, and you turn, and you go down, where does that road lead to?
Let me...
So...
Just empties into the...
I'm just trying to imagine...
Here, you can see the road network where if you were to come out and turn...
However, the applicant does have the option if, at the time of the site plan approval, a request could be made to waive that connection, but it would need to go before Town Council at a quasi-judicial hearing in connection with the site plan review. There's not, there's not an option to address that at the time of the rezoning.
So if we approved this tonight, we would also be, it would be with the understanding and the assumption that this would necessarily have to be completed unless what you just stated.
Unless waived. It would be under the assumption that all of the requirements of the land development ordinance and the proposed zoning conditions would be met, and the connection is a requirement of the land development ordinance unless it would be waived by council through a quasi-judicial action.
And as a follow-up question, if you go out away from the end of the stubout point to the road that it tees with, where does that road lead to? What street?
Well, this is...
No, no, down. No. If you go, take your pointer to the area where the road stubs out.
In Highland Oaks.
Highland Oaks.
Oh, okay.
And you, and you take it all the way over and you turn and you go down, where does that road lead to?
Oh.
Just empties into the...
I'm just trying to imagine...
Here, you can see the road network where if you were to come out and turn left, it would end in a cul-de-sac. If you were to go up to the next street, it would take you around to High House Road.
Okay, so this...
This shows the road network.
Okay, so this road that stubs out is literally in the middle of the development. There's, there's no reason to really be in there unless you live in there for the most part. There's no thoroughfare that commercial traffic would be using within this development to go anywhere, correct? Is that a safe assumption?
Well, this, the connection would provide connectivity for...
For the neighborhood.
The neighborhood into the area for the shopping center.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Green, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. The zoning condition number four, the one that details the 120,000 square feet, that's applied to the entire site, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I want to follow up on that one then. Is, is that the maximum usable space, given all those considerations that we had heard with the various buffering? And is 120,000 square feet just restating this is the max we can use, or is that a concession below the max? And yeah, the applicant can answer that too. It's a question for either one of you guys.
Yeah, because of the, the answer is yes, it is, it is more restrictive than what otherwise could be put on the site, as you probably were. Parking requirements are really low for self-storage facilities. And so there's a multi-story building, but it's only occupying a somewhat small portion of the site. So yes, it is more restrictive.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then if someone would care to make a motion.
I...
Oh. Let's go inside out.
It's your turn, Ryan.
I have a motion. I move at the Board for Case Number 15 REZ 30 to Town Council with a recommendation for approval. While it is not consistent with the existing comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, it is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
I'll second.
Any discussion, please?
Yes. So as the applicant kind of alluded to, there are a lot of constraints on this site. It's obviously set undeveloped for a good portion of time. There's really not that much you're going to be able to do with it. I think this is a good use. I think that the neighborhood will have a gain through this use that they otherwise wouldn't get through any non-development. I also like the, the very detailed zoning conditions, and I know there aren't a lot of cases that you really get this level of detail within zoning conditions, and I really like that the applicant's willing to kind of exert that effort and kind of paint a picture of really what is being presented there. A lot of times we see these and you kind of try to visualize what's going to be there. I really like the detail that was put forth in this, and I think, for, I'm sure the neighborhoods also feel the same way, knowing exactly what's going to be built and potentially their backyards. The one thing that I really don't like about this case is the connectivity, and I realize that's nothing we can do here within the rezoning. Personally, I don't think that the connectivity really makes sense here, so I definitely respect the concerns given that, but due to the fact that any developer could come in today, put a development in, it would require that connectivity. So either way, the connectivity at this point in time is happening. It's just a matter of what use is going to be there. And in this case, I think this use is going to be the best, so that's my motion.
Carla?
Well, he pretty much covered everything. I did want to point out also that the connectivity would happen no matter what develops here, but it sounds like, as opposed to the past, there is some hope that maybe it won't be connected. And I think the use is, is really appropriate for this space and, and good next to this neighborhood, so I think it's good.
Any other?
I would also echo what has been said. The connectivity is a concern, but given the very limited options for the development of the site, I, I can't think of a better prospect than, than what's being contemplated I don't necessarily agree that it is going to be that useful for the neighborhood. It's only going to be useful if the neighbors decide to use it, but, but you know, maybe there is some hope, as Carla says, to address the connectivity issue at a later time.
How about this side of the room? Any comments?
I think that the applicant did a good job, as Ryan echoed, about really honing in on the conditions, and I think the result of that is it helps to ease the transition into neighborhood from the adjacent mixed-use to the neighborhood. So that is the facet that I like about the proposed project.
Anyone else? I'm just going to state what I think are facts, and if it sounds like I'm giving somebody credit, well, then that's what it sounds like. But I was at the public hearing before council, and some of the council members said, well, if we, you know, do something about, you know, talk about square footage, or if we do things about, consider the architectural blend with the area. And lo and behold, zoning conditions that address that very thing. So you know, we always talk about applicants being responsive to the community, but we have an applicant being responsive in, in all directions, which is very, I just wanted to point that out. But the other thing I want to mention is, I heard during the public hearing testimony, someone implied that the connectivity was a done deal. It was going to happen no matter what. That's not the case. As it is right now, it will happen, but there still is room via quasi-judicial hearing. The applicant may request that, but then again, the applicant's the one who puts zoning conditions on, so you can always work with them of, if you're interested in, in doing something about that connectivity. It is an issue that council, it's an issue that we deal with all the time, and while it is coded in right at this moment, there still is room for that to change. I'm not saying it's a done deal that'll happen, and I'm not saying it's a done deal it won't, but it's not locked in stone at this moment just now. So I don't want anyone to walk out of here thinking that that's, that's over and done with. As Ms. Bierman very well-stated before, the process that one would go through to, to have that addressed, and, and I encourage folks to work with applicants, staff, whoever, whoever you need to get questions answered from to, to see about handling that. Any other comments before we call this to a vote? If not, then all those in favor of 15 REZ 30 approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries unanimously, unanimously. And we are now on to our next item, as soon as I find my agenda, under this stack. And we are now talking about the Wellington Park, cottages at Wellington, comprehensive plan amendment, and then there will be an associated rezoning again. This is just the comprehensive plan amendment, 15 CPA 06. Good evening.
Good evening.
Having the whole staff here tonight.
This comprehensive plan amendment is a request for 5.49 acres located at the northeast corner of Wellingboro Drive and Tryon Road. The site is made up of three parcels that front Tryon Road. The site is located midway between the Cary Park intersection to the west and the Piney Plains intersection to the east. Notice of this case and tonight's public hearing was mailed to property owners within 800 feet of the subject property and was posted on-site. Recent GIS maps indicate there may be a stream on a portion of the subject property that will have to be field-determined at the time of development plan review. There are no issues related to the site in regards to the PRCR facility's master plan. According to the comprehensive transportation plan, Tryon Road is a designated major thoroughfare, and Wellingboro Drive is a designated collector road. Triangle Transit Route 305 serves Tryon Road and Piney Plains in this area. Long-range plans for C-Trans envision future C-Trans service coming down Cary Parkway to Tryon Road and along Piney Plains Road to Tryon Road and then to Points East. The existing zoning is R-20 and R-40. And the Southeast Area Plan adopted in 2004 provides the future land use recommendations for this area of town. First, I want to point out the Wellington Park Community Activity Center boundary, which is the blue boundary that goes all the way around. In the Wellington Park Commercial Activities, I'm sorry, Community Activity Center, approximately 73% of the, of this activity center is built out. The existing office floor space in the overall activity center is within the recommended range. The commercial retail floor space is below the recommended range, and the number of residential units is below the recommended number needed to support the existing retail, commercial, and office uses. The majority of the remaining undeveloped land within the activity center is primarily located up at the US Highway 1 and 64 interchange, and that's about 42 vacant acres recommended right now on the plan for office institutional and commercial. You can see that one parcel of the three, that your, of the subject parcels is located within the Community Activity Center boundary, and the other two are located outside of the Community Activity Center boundary. The plan currently recommends office and institutional uses for the site, and the numbers on the plan map correlate to special plan notes. Zooming in to look at the special plan note that applies to this site, you can see its plan note map, map note eight, applies to all four of these parcels, although only three of them are being considered tonight. So it applies to these three, which are the subject site, and then it also applies to this one here. The map note recommends that the subject site and adjacent lots develop in a unified manner. There's also a special map note regarding access that recommends limiting the number of driveways onto Tryon Road through shared driveways and by providing cross-access stubs or easements to adjacent properties. The applicant is proposing a two-part amendment to the Southeast Area Plan. First is to change the site's plan designation from office and institutional to medium-density residential, defined as three to eight dwelling units per acre, single-family attached or detached. And second, to extend the boundary of the Wellington Park Community Activity Center to include the two smaller parcels not currently within the boundary. The first public hearing for this plan amendment request was held on February 25th in concert with the associated rezoning case. Three citizens spoke. One citizen did represent a group of neighbors who were in attendance at the hearing. They spoke in opposition. The concerns, as they relate to land use, were concerns that the change to residential would mean increased traffic, loss of trees, increased stormwater runoff, and other speakers address things that are more zoning or site plan issues such as a request for an increased Cary's land development ordinance includes these four criteria that should be considered when evaluating requests to amend the comprehensive plan. No changes in assumptions or new issues have been identified, but policies and objectives for mixed-use activity centers are currently being reviewed as part of the Imagine Cary Staff observes that the proposed amendment would create the potential for a low-impact residential transition between the established single-family neighborhood to the north and Tryon Road to the south. Also, the unified development of three parcels in this location meets in large part the intent of note number eight on the Southeast Area Plan. And finally, residential development would improve the residential component of the Wellington Park Activity Center. Based on these observations, staff recommends approval of the plan amendment request. This concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant may come forward to make comments.
I'm Mike Kemp with Kensington Partners, and we are seeking the land use plan amendment as staff presented. We totally agree and think that the staff has done a great job at presenting our thoughts and plans, and as well as the rezoning case that's coming up with conditions, and we'd like to, to discuss specifics of the, the rezoning at that time. But we believe that the, as, as staff has, has noted, that there is an abundance of office in the area, and we believe it's a better use for residential on this particular track and in the area in general. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing. Would anyone care to speak about the comprehensive plan amendment for this particular site?
Can we go around this way?
Either way, it's fine.
This is how we carry on, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make sure I'm here. Okay, oh. There you go. Good, good evening. My name is Ruth Merkel, and I live at Wellington Park, and I'm one of two speakers who will speak on our behalf. First of all, let me start off by saying that we do thank you all for listening to the concerns of your fellow citizens. We all love Cary, or we would not have chosen to live here. Quality of life is important to us. I'm here with several of my neighbors to express our concerns about this proposed rezoning. In addition to serious traffic issues, we have concerns about the density of the proposed development, the encroachment and quality of life issues for the residents who are living closest to the property, and the environmental issues created by developing this small parcel of land. The biggest issue which I'm going to talk about is, is parking, is traffic, and the additional burden that this development will place on an already difficult situation at the entrance of Wellington Park, which is at Wellingboro Drive and, and Tryon Road. This area of Cary is already under siege with new development that is adding to traffic problems along Tryon Road. Our subdivision is locked in with only two outlets. Both entrances are congested with increased traffic, especially during peak morning and evening hours. I'd like to ask, has this developer tried to make a left-hand turn outside of Wellington Park during these hours? Well, you wait, and you wait, and you wait. And he wants to add more cars to an existing problem. The other problem is coming into the neighborhood. The right-turn lane into our subdivision is very narrow, and a car coming in could easily run into a car on its left that's waiting to make a left-hand turn out. Additionally, while you're trying to make a left-hand turn, the center lane, when you come toward Tryon Road, is not even wide enough to pull to a stop and move to the next lane. All four lanes have to be cleared before you can make that left-hand turn, so you have to wait, and the people behind you continue to have to wait if you want to do it safely. Okay. Sorry, lost my... Okay, we have, we have requested traffic reports and a light at our entrance in the past, but we have been turned down both by the town and DOT. We know that the cottages will not change our ability to get improved traffic solutions, but will only add to the problem. Like I say, I'm not opposed to development, but I am, I will not support further, further development in this neighborhood unless DOT or the town can address the very serious traffic problem that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ashley Feit, and we live on Woodruff Court. Our wooded property backs up to the proposed development, and our concerns are really with the encroachment of this development on our quality of life. We chose to make our home in Cary, and more specifically in Wellington Park, for the natural preserve feel that creates a unique lifestyle that is really hard to find in a lot of places. We moved here from Florida where they clear-cut everything, just clear-cut it, build, and so we were really happy to find a community like this. Placing 14 2,000-square-foot homes with only six-foot of green space between them next to a budding and older established neighborhood is going to lead to overcrowding and a sense of encroachment into our community. We also believe that the minimum, the minimal buffers of 20 feet, the destruction of the wooded... We also believe that the minimal buffers of twenty feet, the destruction of the wooded area, and the potential for rainwater issues, because yes, there is a stream, is really going to encroach on our quality of life. Again, our whole reason for moving to Cary. It's our understanding that the current land use plan for O&amp;I requires a buffer of forty feet from residential areas. So if this plan is approved, we are requesting that forty-foot buffer between the Wellington Park homes and the cottages. Again, like Ruth said, we're not opposed to development. We know it's going to happen. We just really are concerned with any development around our community that will encroach on the natural field that has been nurtured and preserved over many years. The developers say that they want to blend in with the look and feel of our neighborhood, but if they come in and clear-cut everything, all the woods behind us, that won't be blending in. In summary, our concerns with the destruction of our green space and environmental problems with erosion, drainage, weak tree root systems, and sound pollution are all important factors when considering how the area around our neighborhood is developed. If you clear-cut those trees, in the fall, you can hear, once those trees lose their leaves, you can hear Tryon. And so with all of that gone, there'll be quite a difference. So I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to talk about this and share our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for the comprehensive plan amendment? Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing. Excuse me. We will now be able to answer, or ask questions of our staff and of the applicant. Would anyone care to begin? Someone? I'll look to this side for...
So the delta here is, if we're going to, the areas to the right of eight and nine, those little two extra areas, will be now included in the community center?
Yes, that's the request.
Okay, and eight is currently zoned how? R-twenty? No, or...
Oh, the zoning? Yes, it's R-twenty.
Okay.
Eight is, the one that's eight.
Eight is R-twenty, okay.
And the other, the small one is...
R-forty.
Yeah, let's see.
Sort of. R-forty's...
So two of them are...
Oh, one of them is already R-twenty, okay. Okay. Thank you.
That's it. Any other questions of the staff or of the applicant? Yes, one.
Why is the fourth parcel in the activity center boundaries not part of this proposed development? One to the far north.
You mean, let's see?
Yep, right there.
This one?
Mm-hmm.
It's, well, it's not a part of the request. That owner is not a part of this request.
Is it undeveloped?
Yes.
And the zoning on that is R-twenty?
R-forty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, how does the traffic, say this were to develop as an office, what would be the difference in the traffic between that and the proposal? So you must have some idea of number of trips for this residential development versus a typical office?
I have an idea, but I would rather that be answered by someone. Sure. I think Pritham Konda of our transportation, he can answer that a little better than I can. Uh-oh. Yes.
Sorry, about that, we're going to have to start another one here. Which means I have to type that number in. Apologize for the delay here, sorry.
Well, while that's happening, does anyone have any questions that don't rely upon our screen for the moment? Or are we that dependent on what's in front of us?
Good evening. I'm Pritham Konda of Transportation and Facilities. I can try to answer part of your question. As proposed, the single-family units would generate approximately twenty trips in the AM and eighteen trips in the PM. Based on my conversation with Ms. Granon and Ms. Spearman, someone could develop approximately forty-five to fifty thousand square feet of office. That would definitely generate a lot more trips than the residential use. I do not have an estimate on how many it could generate.
All right, but a resident, I think the net effect here is that this proposal is a lot less devastating to the traffic situation that they already have than an office building would be.
That is correct.
Okay.
While we're on the subject of traffic and trips, those conditions that were about the driveways, limited numbers of driveways on Tryon Road, that applies no matter what the use of the property is, residential, commercial, whatever, correct?
Right, and to clarify, they are actually notes on the long-range plan, so they're not actually conditions. They're recommendations.
Thanks, thanks for clarifying.
And just to verify, this twenty-foot buffer is, between the neighborhoods, is standard? They're not asking for a reduction in this buffer?
I don't believe they are, but I wanted to point out that the zoning case is coming up, and they will delve into the buffer more. Right now, we're just going to try to talk about the land use itself.
Okay.
Any other, yes. Oh, sorry. Any other questions for the staff or the applicant on this particular case? Well, if, excuse me, if there are no more questions, then we can probably put a motion forward on this comprehensive plan amendment. I believe Nancy's going that way.
I'm going that way. I moved at the board forward case number fifteen-CPA-11 to the Town Council with a recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan as proposed.
Second, please.
I will second.
Thank you. Discussion, if you will.
I think it's a good use for the land. I think it's going to, as we just found out, be even less traffic, and for those reasons, I would like to see that 1.84 acres be included into the Wellington Park Community Center.
If I can interrupt for a minute and ask you to amend your motion. You gave the case number for the previous CPA. Just to make sure the record is clear, I think you were meaning fifteen CPA zero-six.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Yes, so I'm amending my motion to be fifteen-CPA-zero-six. I read my wrong notes. Thank you.
I will resecond. I agree with Nancy. I think this is a good use for this land, and I just, I think that the reduction in traffic is going to be good for the area because the traffic in that area is bad, and so that's why I support it.
I, I'm not sure that I necessarily believe that traffic is going to be reduced. I think that the choice to use this for development of residential versus commercial office building may mitigate the, what will be the traffic in the future. I know from using Tryon Road that I completely sympathize with the sentiments that were raised here, and I also am concerned as well with the points that were raised by the residents about the clear cut and the impact, not only on the aesthetic and the quality of life, but also when you do cut trees down, you will start to hear the traffic, and there is a lot of traffic to hear on Tryon Road. So while I do, you know, believe that a compelling case has been made in a certain respect for the use of the land, residential versus commercial, I still have my reservations and my concerns about the ongoing theme throughout this town that we've been hearing about concerning the, what someone aptly termed "the siege of development" in our community. So I would like to bear that in mind when we decide how we vote.
Again, I'm just agreeing on the plan amendment, not on the zoning case.
Right. All right, and I, I'm going to support the motion. Looking at the options that we have for this piece of land, I mean, short of putting in another storage facility, this is going to be the least, you know, have least impact on traffic, on future traffic. I understand it's not going to make the traffic better now. The problem here is not going to be fixed by not developing this parcel. Something's going to happen here. You know, what are our best options? And so I think this, this probably is one of the good options.
Yes?
I'm going to pipe in there, too. I'm also going to support the motion. And again, developing is obviously not going to fix the traffic problem there, but it's probably going to decrease it. It's also, and what kind of really does it for me is it's going to provide a better, what I see is a better transition. So you have a lot of heavy-use activity center, you stare, and you have the Wellington Low-Density Residential. I think this medium-density residential is going to provide a much better transition there than were it to be developed by the potential fifty thousand square foot office building that could be built there today. So that's why I'm supporting it.
I'd just like to echo what some of the other board members said, that in the support of the CPA amendment, that the change of that, you know, going back twenty years ago, it was, it was in the plan as MDR, and then it was changed later. And I agree that I think going back to MDR is probably the best use, given to see where we are twenty years later, traffic patterns, to build out of the activity center, et cetera, so.
Well, I think as staff very nicely pointed out, that we're underutilized residential in that area, so.
And not lost on us is that it's also completely within the community activity center, which means in our next case, we get to see a preliminary development plan as opposed to just guessing so there'll be a lot more questions answered going forward. Any other comments on this? If not, I'll call this to a vote. All those in favor, and let me get the number myself right, that's, all those in favor, fifteen CPA zero-six, please say aye. Anyone opposed, say no, please. That motion carries unanimously, and we are on to the associated rezoning case.
Thank you.
That would be fifteen REZ fourteen. Thank you very much.
That's the one seventy-one.
And by the way, thanks to our tech folks for getting us all back up and while we were moving right along.
We're not quite there yet.
I just jinxed it.
Here we go. This is the same piece of property that you just heard. This is the five-point-four-nine acres located at the northeast corner of Tryon Road and Wellinborough Drive, as Mrs. Redling just explained. Two of the lots, subject properties are locate, are currently zoned residential twenty. One of the parcels is residential forty. The proposed zoning is to bring all of the property into the mixed-use overlay district to apply a zoning designation of MXD, or Mixed Use District, to the property. This is the thoroughfare plan that you saw just a moment ago, and this is the preliminary development plan submitted by the applicant with the buffer area shaded in by staff so that you can see exactly what is proposed. Fourteen residential lots with a seven-thousand-square-foot community gathering area, a minimum lot size of five thousand one hundred eighteen square feet, building setbacks of eighteen feet from the roadway, three-foot minimum side yard setback, and a seventeen-foot rear yard setback. So I'm just going to go back to the plan again for just a moment so that you can see. Consistent with the LDO, thirty-foot streetscape has been proposed along Wellinborough Drive. A fifty-foot streetscape has been proposed along Tryon Road. The twenty-foot buffer adjacent to the existing residential neighborhood is consistent with LDO requirements. There is a small buffer reduction between the proposed preliminary development plan and that one R-twenty lot to the east. At the Town Council public hearing, there were concerns expressed about traffic, stormwater management, perimeter buffer width, office use versus residential use, and the proposed building setbacks, the three-foot building setback. There was some discussion about compatibility with the adjacent neighborhood. Since the Town Council public hearing, the applicant did provide an additional zoning condition to offer a six-foot-tall opaque fence and supplemental evergreen landscaping. The requirement is a Type B semi-opaque buffer. They've offered specifically ligustrum, which is an evergreen shrub which grows fairly rapidly. Staff would recommend that it not be that specific because you can have a problem getting certain plant material. We have, we have an arborist in the planning department who could help identify a suitable replacement, so as this goes forward, that would be something that we would recommend the applicant tweak to, say, ligustrum or some similar type of plant material. There was also an earlier version of the preliminary development plan that did not exactly meet the town's design standards for the radius on the cul-de-sac, and the applicant has addressed that. So that has been brought into compliance with the LDO standards. This concludes staff's presentation. Following the applicant's comments and the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you again. My name's Michael Kemp again with Kensington Partners, and we appreciate your time this evening. Staff again has done a great job in explaining the project and our goals and the specifics regarding the project. We've have, per the notes on the, on the development ordinance, we have combined multiple parcels, including the third parcel, which, there was a question about the fourth parcel earlier, but as you can see, the land tapers down, and with the buffers, it becomes literally unusable as you include the buffers, so that, to answer the previous question, and also addresses the concerns of that third parcel that we have included. We've had two neighborhood meetings, which were well-attended. We also have had a lot of discussions with the neighbors outside of those meetings, and feel like our plan has been presented well to them, where they understand exactly what we're proposing to do. The, we have also proposed to reduce the number of lots from fourteen to thirteen, which actually makes the density even better. The, in reality, it becomes a low-density project versus a medium-density project. So if you consider where we are in the town of Cary, an LDO, or an LDO zoning of two-point-three homes per acre, from a density standpoint, I think is fairly low, and especially when you consider the discussions on office and what office could bring to the site, the discussions on traffic, the comments from traffic, an office building versus thirteen lots, two points, two-point-three-seven homes per acre. In addition, based on the meetings that we've had and discussions with neighbors, we've added fencing and landscaping. There was a note about ligustrums. Our plan is to use Nellie Stevens hollies, which we prefer, actually, and so that's the plan there. So in summary, density, we think, we're basically dealing with an L, a low-density residential project. Density being very low. Traffic, although obviously developing the site will increase traffic slightly, it will not really get close to what an office building would be, so we believe that it's the best-case scenario for developing the site in regards to traffic. Stormwater, obviously, we have major stormwater restrictions, and we're adhering to all of them with our engineer. There are some stormwater issues that we've been told about and are aware of off-site that we are not adding to or really have nothing to do with. Those were stormwater issues that were created twenty or thirty years ago. site will increase traffic slightly, it will not really get close to what an office building would be. So we believe that it's the best-case scenario for developing the site in regards to traffic. Stormwater, obviously, we have major stormwater restrictions, and we're adhering to all of them with our engineer. There are some stormwater issues that we've been told about and are aware of off-site that we are not adding to or really have nothing to do with. Those were stormwater issues that were created 20 or 30 years ago when, when the neighborhood behind us was developed, and we are not feeding into that. So I think it's important to note that our stormwater is separate from the problems that they're having and that they have had in the past. Our, our buffers, we have 50-foot buffer from Tryon Road, stretching all the way down Tryon Road, those, and then 20 across the back. Those are undisturbed buffers. We do not, we do not plan on cutting down anything in those areas, and in reality, adding to them with the Nellie Stevens Hollies. So I just wanted to make sure that we're clear that those are undisturbed buffers that are 50-foot and 20, so 70-foot total from Tryon to the existing houses in the rear. So once again, thank you for your time this evening, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing for this rezoning case. If anyone should like to speak to this.
Thank you. I'm Ruth Merkel. Just a couple of things. I'd like to ask, and I will talk to maybe after this meeting, the applicant, he talks about he had two neighborhood meetings. Well, I know I'm very involved in our neighborhood. Many of the people here are involved in our neighborhood, and we were not aware of any, quote, "neighborhood meetings." He may have talked to individual residents, maybe knocked on their doors, but there was no set neighborhood meeting. I want to clarify that with you. There was not a set neighborhood meeting. Also, one thing that I would have talked to him about if we had one was the entrance off Wellinborough Road really concerns us. And again, that brings it right up to, we already have cars that are waiting to make a left on the Tryon Road. Then he's got his street coming right out onto Wellinborough. So those people are going to have to wait. While our people wait, it just fills up the queues for making that turn. My question would be, I would like not have the entrance be there, but maybe have it be closer to Piney Plains or Pink Acres. That is really going to hurt us to have that entrance off his street onto Wellinborough. It's, it's just going to be a mess-up for us from the beginning. So that's one thing I definitely would like to see changed, is have that road cut off and have him go somewhere else. Piney Plains, Pink Acres, I don't care where. I don't want it on Wellinborough Road, and that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this public hearing?
Hello and good evening. My name is Grace Portell, and I am a proud homeowner. This is my first home. My family, I have an 18-month-old, and I'm 17 weeks pregnant with number two. I come from Atlanta, Georgia. I come from a real big city, millions and millions of people, used to big traffic. As a young family, we did not want new construction because we wanted trees and established neighborhood. This neighborhood is as old as I am. I'm proud to say I'm 36. So the space that we enjoy between our homes is unbelievable. I have a flat backyard. My backyard is Lauren Brook Court. It's the one that is the second cul-de-sac over, and so that's my house. And we love playing in our backyard. And I respect the council's original decision for this to be an office use. The challenge with townhomes is how tall they are and the visibility. I'm afraid of them being tall in the backyards going into our backyards from a visibility standpoint. I'm really here to speak to a new townhome and a new development up against a 36-year-old neighborhood does not really gel. It's just, it's night and day. So I'm speaking to the aesthetic that makes our neighborhood so special. We've got a great representation here. But as a homeowner of less than two months, to see the signs posted, and for me to have to do my research and realize what was going to happen in my backyard was tough, frankly, because I really, really, really love the space. I love the space. We're not going to move. I'm okay with change. Trust me, I'm young. I get it. Come from a big city. But I respect the fact that it was declared office for a reason. And to not be in support of this being 13, 13 homes shoehorned into five acres, that's not a lot of space. Three feet between homes, and we have, oh, good gracious, I almost took out a tape measure before I came here to measure the space between our homes. It's a lot. It's way more than that. So thank y'all for your, for your time and for really, really thinking through the impact for everyone involved. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for this rezoning, please? I see no one rising, so we will close the public hearing on this rezoning case. And now our board will ask questions of staff and the applicant. I'll begin on this side. Brian?
I have a couple of questions. Ms. Grant, and the, and I probably should have sent you this in advance, the, the density of the Wellington subdivision to the north, do you have that number on hand?
Not off the top of my head. I don't. I'm sorry. I do have a copy of the site plan for it, so it gives you an idea of the lot sizes. So great, it's part of a PDD, the Wellington Park Neighborhood. So this shows you the property immediately to the north. This was developed at a time when perimeter buffers could actually be part of the lot. The ordinance has changed in the last 30 years. So now, this neighborhood were to go in today, we would require them to provide a buffer that was in common open space. But when the neighborhood was developed, it could be actually part of the lot. So the lot sizes vary. They go everywhere from right around just under 8,000 square feet to some that are closer to a quarter of an acre, third of an acre. So there's a range of different lots.
Where you have the mouse right there, what is the size of that buffer along that southern line?
This is a 30-foot perimeter buffer that is actually part of the lots.
So, okay, so the applicant's proposing, I believe, another 20 feet on their end?
Correct.
So you actually have a 50-foot buffer, in essence?
Right. And the way this works, in fairness to these neighbors, and the way it works is, it's not supposed to be removed, but many times when it's on an individual homeowner's property, they frequently will put playground equipment in or remove it, and it's hard, it's hard for staff to enforce that, which is why we changed the ordinance several years ago to make that common open space, because it is hard to make sure that vegetation stays in place when it's on an individual's property.
Okay, that's definitely understood. So the, the buffer reduction that the applicant's proposing, below what the LDO requires?
That's only in this portion here, because this lot next door is larger than 8,000 square feet. So this is the R20 vacant lot next door. There should be a, per the LDO, a 30-foot buffer between these lots that are around 51, 5200 square feet, and this large lot, that's where a 30-foot buffer would be required. That's where the reduction is proposed. So this buffer to the north is consistent with the LDO. That's not a reduction to LDO standards, because there are some lots to the north that are less than 8,000 square feet. The applicant has offered a fence which exceeds LDO standards. That would not be a requirement. Wanted to clarify, too, just for the benefit of some of the citizens, what they are proposing is not townhomes. They are detached. They are close to each other. There's only a three-foot side yard setback proposed, so means a six-foot building separation between the buildings. But, but they would be on their own individual lots, so they would be detached residential.
And I believe you just answered my third question, and that was with a three-foot setback. That's three feet from each side, so six feet between wall to wall.
Correct.
Okay.
Minimum, right.
Minimum, right. Okay.
Any other questions on this side? I look here. Yes?
We had this in another case where we were asking, does the buffers get included in the average lot size?
No, not in this particular case. The average lot size does not include the buffers.
Okay. Because I looked at on the Wake of site, and the, and the existing on Woodruff, the smallest piece of property there, I went and just looked, and that's almost .4 of an acre. So we're looking at pretty big lots down to pretty close houses. So I can understand the citizens' concern that they're going from very spacious into very crowded. But then, on the other hand, you have Tryon Road there, so I don't know if people are going to have big spacious houses on Tryon Road either. So it's kind of a hard area to transition, but I do thoroughly understand how these people who are living in some nice big land would like a more of a buffer, at least before it was going to be 40-foot. Now it's only 20-foot, and even then, it's still going to be looking on houses that are scrunched together. So I really can understand that transition challenge with this piece of property.
And I would echo that as well. I just can't come out clean, really.
And I'm glad that they, they did go from the 14 lots to the 13 lots, but I can still feel the angst with that.
Anyone else?
I have a question on sidewalk connectivity on the site. I couldn't find it, the larger blow-up of this.
There would be a requirement for sidewalk on both sides of the street, and they have shown that on their plan. And then there is proposed sidewalk connectivity at the end of the cul-de-sac down to Tryon Road, where there's already a sidewalk. And then they would be required to do improve, improvements along Wellinborough Drive as well.
And maybe, because I, I want to get back to that in a second. I'm curious of, in the one-lot reduction, which lot got eliminated?
The applicant did not submit that in advance, so I just learned about that tonight. And so they're going to, they would need to revise this plan before it goes to, before it goes to town council.
Okay. Because one of the questions I have is on the north side of that, of the proposed plan here in front of us. As we go past where I think it's the post office, the mailboxes and the
The mailbox kiosk.
And the community amenity space there. As you continue along, right along the buffer there, it's almost like a sidewalk to nowhere, particularly because you've just got one lot at the very end. Well, I guess it's the connectivity to the post office, but the mailboxes, I'll take that back. I'm just looking, my, you know, my gut sense is that we're squeezing something on here that doesn't fit well. And so I was just looking at that stretch of sidewalk there of like, if that could be eliminated. But I realized the connectivity to that back lot on the far east, that sidewalk is the connectivity to the mailboxes. I'm sorry. Just looking for some space in here. Good gracious. You have something else, sure?
Yeah, I'm looking at the topo map also on this, and I would like to have more discussion on the stormwater and how we're going to deal with the drainage on that. I know that's not
That is a site plan issue.
It's a site plan issue, sorry.
Yes. That is not something that is required for them to submit at the time of rezoning. They've shown the general location of a best management practice stormwater pond.
Oh, that's
But we don't, yeah, we do not have
I can't read the law, sorry.
Yeah, we don't have that level of detail yet.
Okay.
I just want to clarify about, we've mentioned a couple of times, the rezoning condition. The fence, that's not in the staff report, but that has definitely been offered as a condition. The reduction to 13 lots, is that a definite?
As I said, we learned, we learned that tonight for the first time. That's the first time staff was aware of that.
I heard it was kind of wishy-washy there. I want to make sure that
Well, the applicant has stated it now.
Okay.
So we can certainly, during the public hearing, so we can hold them to that.
So that's a condition now. As of now, it's 13.
They offered it at the public hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The cul-de-sac, is that required?
They actually have some very steep topography challenges. Ideally, connectivity would be required in this case, but in light of the topography and the extreme narrowness of this adjacent lot right here, which is vacant and drops below grade, there are some cases when the planning director can waive connectivity. Basically, connecting a street to this lot makes this lot useless because there's no room to develop anything on it. So in some situations, the planning director can look at the physical challenges of the property and, and say there's, you know, there's no opportunity to put a road through here, because it would totally take this individual's lot. I have met with the owner of this property. He did not want to be part of this zoning. He's interested in doing something with this lot himself and understands he may have to look at a shared driveway, but, but he did not want to be part of this application.
If you put a stub in there, that's probably not what he had in mind of doing with this lot.
He actually, he actually did provide a letter to staff saying that he supported the buffer reduction, and he had no issue with bringing the stub to his property.
Really? So this could have, and one of the things I'm really struggling with here, and as I'm sure other members are, is just how, how you can fit everything in such a small area. And one of the things that I see is that cul-de-sac, would there be any way to, instead of doing a cul-de-sac, stubbing it to the road, would that provide more area, I guess, to develop?
You've already got, I'll, I'll let someone from transportation speak to that, but you've already got a lot of roadways and driveways. We're trying to minimize the number of cuts onto Tryon Road. There's a median in the road, and there's also a very, very, a blind spot, a curve. So this is, it would be a DOT requirement. I'll let Mr. Condam add, Condam add anything he wants to, to that, but it would require, it would require DOT approval. So, yeah, see if, if Mr. Condam has anything more to add to that.
I think Ms. Grant covered most of it. Tryon Residency DOT Road. To date, we have not had any discussions about access on Tryon, but the applicant can certainly request DOT to see if they would entertain, entertain an access on Tryon. But both the town and DOT have the spacing requirements for a four-line median divided thoroughfare. So those would be taken into account, and it would be a bit unlikely to get that access. However, they could still try. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes?
I just, I want to confirm that the developer said that their, the existing buffer is not, is going to be undisturbed. He has no plans, they have no plans of cutting any trees down.
We would, we would require tree protection fencing, and we would require protection of existing vegetation to the fullest extent possible. When the driveway or the sidewalk connection goes in, yes, some trees are going to come out. There's, road improvements usually take some of the trees out. So yes, there will be, there will be some revegetating that occurs, but we will require a tree protection fence to go in as part of the development plan standards.
Thank you. I think, in this case, it's essential that that, where possible, occur because of the concerns of the citizens that live in the development behind. I mean, I think it's really important that we have some sense going through with this, that that's really going to happen, that
That is our requirement, yes. That is our requirement. We, we always have to do our best, but we are not the ones who are actually going out there and building it. So we, you know, we have a system where we can find people if they don't do what they're supposed to do, or if they violate the rules. But those are, those are requirements that our staff takes very seriously.
While we're on this subject, if the undisturbed area doesn't meet the opacity that we need, do we plant into it? Is that normally what happens?
Correct, correct. The streetscape along Tryon Road is a 50-foot opaque or type A streetscape. It's also a 30-foot opaque streetscape along Wellinborough Drive. And 30-foot, I'm sorry, the 20-foot buffer to the north is required to be a type B buffer, which is not as opaque. That's where the applicants offered the fence.
Are there any other questions? I have one question on the road, and, and I should have looked it up by now, but for all the times I've been on that road, I can't recall. The road that comes out that intersects Tryon Road?
Wellinborough Drive?
How many? It appears to me that's a two-lane road, one in, one out. We're always having folks, when they develop property, develop the frontage area to whatever the transportation plan says, and, and we haven't talked about anything happening on that road. Am I to understand that the transportation plan does not ever see that even adding so much as like a left-turn lane, a three-lane wide Wellinborough down at that area? Is that correct? It just, it's, it's planned to be a two-lane road forever? And I may be wrong about it. It may already be three lanes. I really don't know.
We haven't, we haven't really gotten into that much detail at this point, but we did let the applicant know at our pre-application meeting that we would be looking for a three-lane section that would have a slightly wider width than a two-lane. If I'm, if I'm correct, I think they are showing approximately 45-foot road section that could accommodate one inbound lane and two outbound lanes.
Excellent, okay. Excellent, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, would someone care to make a motion unless rezoning?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board forward case number 15 REZ14 to town council with a recommendation for approval conditioned upon the town council's approval of case number 15 CPA O6. This rezoning will be consistent with the existing comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans if council approves 15 CPA O6. And this rezoning is reasonable in the, in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation. Almost didn't make it through that.
Is there a second?
I will second.
I just wanted to point out, the applicant offered a zoning condition today that dropped the density down considerably. So it's possible for you to amend the comprehensive plan or the council to amend the comprehensive plan and take it to medium-density residential, which is what was requested. But you may want to amend the, the motion because it could be that you still want to recommend in favor of this regardless of the comprehensive plan.
Okay. I think I need to amend it just to make sure those two conditions are in there. So I'm going to amend my motion just to ensure that the fencing and the reduction of lot size.
Okay, yeah, that would be fine. You could, you could do that. And you could say, you could make a motion even though it is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. You could do that. And then
Well, my intent this time was to let them make the big decision on the CPA and let this ride on that.
Okay.
I mean, that was my intent. I don't know, versus saying, no matter what you do with the land use, we think this should go. Because it's not one of those situations where we can't see it being used in the future for residential. So you're saying it
What you, what has already occurred is there was a recommendation for a comprehensive plan amendment to go to medium-density residential. And then we learned during the public hearing that the applicant's going to reduce the density further, which takes it closer to 2.1. So instead of being very close to three dwelling units per acre, which would be close to medium, it's down to, closer to a low density. And so that's what, that's what we were thinking, is to say that it's consistent. It may be, it may be generally consistent because it's still a 5,100 square foot lot, so that's more of a medium, you know.
Yeah. So in this case, I'm still going to stick with this, and I'll tell you why. It goes back to that concept that we've been talking about, that when you make something low-density residential, you have a certain expectation of what that's going to look like. And it doesn't look like six feet between houses. Right?
Well, and the lot size, too. The council actually did give us direction that anything that's a TR, even if the density's only very, very low, would not ever be a low-density residential. So, okay.
I'm going to stick with this if everybody's okay with that. Well, I'll see. We'll vote.
Your motion.
You can tell.
It's your motion.
That's a good point, though.
Yeah. Did we get a second?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Do you agree with the changes to the
I do, yes.
Okay. So, you know, my concern here is primarily the 20-foot buffer. However, that, that's kind of a failure on our part. This is something that I've been squawking about for like 15 years. I feel like a buffer between two such different housing situations, you know, lot sizes, setbacks, really deserves a significant buffer, more than 20 feet. I have never won that argument, and so here we are. You know, we're trying to ask the developer to give us something that he doesn't have to give us, and he doesn't have room to give us. So, you know, that's, I can only hope that in the future, that is, you know, those types of buffers are beefed up.
And I'm going to support it. I hear the residents' concerns about traffic and about the trees, but I think that the 20-foot buffer and the fact that he's made the comment that they're not going, it's going to be undisturbed, and the fence and additional trees being planted, I like that. The traffic is, is a problem. But I think that we'll have to hopefully have the DOT and the town of Cary have a light there at some point. But I think at this point, this is a good use for the land.
Any other comments on this motion before we call it to a vote?
Well, approved criteria for mixed-use district rezonings, intensity, types, and mix of uses. I, sorry, I know the numbers say it's not intense, but it just seems intense to me. The relationship between the homes doesn't give me a sense of, that I would like to see transition to the existing neighborhood.
Anyone else?
Gets it on the agenda.
Exactly.
All right. Well, if that's the case, then I shall call this to a vote. All those in favor of approving 15 REZ14, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no, please.
No.
Three noes.
No.
Four noes. Oh, wow. I'm going to write those down here, so give me a moment. I haven't had to write that many down in a long time.
Took us a little while.
All right. So the motion passes five, let me make, just count it up and make sure we've got all this. Five to four at the moment, and that's one of the closer ones we've had, but it does pass. It will now be presented to town council as opposed to going on the consent agenda for sure. So that takes care of our two common comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning cases. We will now move to the 15 REZ16 Luda property. And I prefer to press ahead on this one unless somebody here has a pressing reason to take a short break, because this one could take a while, but we just power through this. Off we go. We are on to 15 REZ16. Hello again.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone about 21.5 acres at the northwest corner of Carpenter Fire Station Road and Green Level Church Road. This is a vicinity map. You can see Green Level Church, to the side Carpenter Fire Station, and then this is the unexisting subdivision Arlington Park that you'll hear comments on tonight. This is a larger aerial view of the property where you can see it in the context of the surrounding development. The existing zoning of the property is R40. The proposed zoning district is the mixed-use district and also addition of the mixed-use overlay district. Since this is proposed as a mixed-use district, there's also a preliminary development plan that is required. And this is a color rendering of the preliminary development plan. I have several slides where I will point out some of the key features describing some of the aspects included in this. Just a few things to point out. There are a number of buildings that would total no more than 110,000 square feet. The largest anchor building being a maximum of 55,000 square feet that would be located at least 200 feet from the property line, the common property boundary with Arlington Park. There are five access points from the adjacent thoroughfares. There would be a signalized intersection at this location, and then a right-in, right-out, a right-in only. This area would be a right-in, I believe that's a, a right-in, right-out, and then this is a right-out with a leftover. Couple of other aspects related to access, I'd like to point out, there is a road connection to Northland's Drive, which goes into the Arlington Park subdivision, and also Jockey Club Circle, which currently stubs to the property line, would be, would need to be completed with a turnaround. And this is so that emergency vehicles and also solid waste vehicles, those different kinds of vehicles can, can have adequate turnaround area. I would point out, I know connectivity is, has been an issue, and a lot of the discussions with the neighborhood on this case, as well as others, would point out with regard to Jockey Club Circle, that the planning director did approve waiver of the road connection to the property from Jockey Club Circle, and that was due to topographic constraints here. However, the preliminary development plan does, is required at this point to show the turnaround. That is a design standard that the planning director is not authorized to waive. So that's why even though the connection, the road connection to the proposed development has been waived at this point, the turnaround cannot be waived. And then there is also, there is a pedestrian connection that is provided. In the case of the Northland's Drive area, this is one that does not qualify at this point for waiver at the time of the site plan. And as we've mentioned in earlier cases, as this moves forward, the applicant would have the ability to request this, to go to a quasi-judicial action. But further, any further waivers of connectivity cannot be addressed at this point. So that being said, let me just summarize some of the other key aspects of the proposal. The land use that's proposed is basically commercial use. There are a number of specific uses that are explicitly prohibited. A couple of those would be prohibited by the LDO in any event, but they're, were listed in the conditions offered by the applicant. Again, the maximum floor area, 110,000 square feet, that would be arranged basically in the five development areas based on the interior road network. One of the buildings, the largest building, could be as large as 55,000 square feet. The remaining buildings would range from 5,000 to 23,000 square feet and would be, would meet a setback of at least 160 feet from Arlington Park. There's just some comments related to the access that I've pointed out on the graphic. There's also a minimum of 7,000 square feet of gathering space proposed along the main internal street that would include some, either a decorative fountain, public outdoor seating, or public art. The minimum gathering space requirement is 5,000 square feet, so that's a little in addition to what would be required otherwise. They're also showing enhanced hardscape areas at the connections to Northland Drive. Also, to the extent that it's allowed by, by the town after more detailed review, they also propose to have some wayfinding signs to make sure that we maximize the potential for the traffic within the development to access on, directly onto the thoroughfares, particularly Carpenter, Carpenter Fire Station Road rather than using the internal subdivision streets. There are also some conditions related to enhanced buffers adjacent to Arlington Park, an additional 10 feet of width, enhanced landscaping along portions, and an eight-foot opaque fence. The required buffer adjacent to Arlington Park is 50-foot opaque buffer. There is a 30-foot buffer on Arlington Park that's existing as part of common open space. At the time of the final development of the site plan, the, the 50-foot buffer width that's required is actually a combined width for the two adjacent properties, so some of that area could be taken as credit. Also, there are decorative pedestrian lighting proposed along the main street that would have a maximum height of 20 feet, and then decorative baller lighting along the pedestrian connections. There are also some conditions related to hours of operation for the larger building, limiting the actual open hours for the building, and then also limitations on when delivery and service vehicles would access the site, and then the servicing of dumpsters. Would just point out with this, staff does have some concerns with this condition. We just point that out just because there are some real challenges in trying to enforce these conditions and just, it can be done, but it often takes a longer timeframe. It's not something that can typically be done immediately because of documentation efforts that have to be made and difficulty in, in going through those steps before you can assess fines and do the other means to, to follow through completely with enforcement. With regard to the land use plan, the designation is now commercial or medium-density residential. The town council, town council public hearing that was held in November of last year for a plan amendment request that was associated with this rezoning changed the plan designation from in, medium, from medium to high-density residential. And that plan amendment was approved by town council in February of this year. The site is impacted by stream buffers and floodplains, as you can see here. There are, there is an existing street-side trail along Green Level Church Road, and then you can also see other proposed greenways in the vicinity. This just shows from the transportation plan, you can see Carpenter Fire Station Road and Green Level Church Road are major thoroughfares. And there are, is a future C-Trans route proposed along Green Level Church Road. This shows the properties that were notified at the public hearing. At the initial public hearing with town council, there were 10 speakers who spoke in opposition. The main concerns related to the road connection to the adjacent neighborhood, general traffic issues, public safety, and concerns that there was not a market demand for more retail in this area. Four citizens spoke in favor citing the need for more restaurants, retail, and medical services in the area. And council did urge the applicant and the neighbors to work together to address issues. The applicant can speak more to this, but I know that there have been a number of meetings between the applicant and some residents of the neighborhood since the initial public hearing, as they have sought to resolve their differences. And that concludes staff's comments. Following the applicant's comments in the public hearing will be available for questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Glenda Top, and I'm with Glenda S. Top and Associates. I'm here tonight representing the Simpler Company and the property owners, the looters. As required in a mixed-use overlay district, we have submitted a preliminary development plan. This started as a traditional grocery-based small shopping center, but based on numerous meetings and discussions with the surrounding neighbors. Our plan has transformed into a main street neighborhood development. We are very appreciative of the great suggestions from the neighborhood and excited about the direction this center has taken. The development still has a grocery store, but also has a main street with sit-down restaurants and public plaza areas, which we believe will be used for everything from charitable fundraisers to health fairs to get-togethers by youth sports team. The purpose of my presentation tonight is to explain how the proposed rezoning meets the requirements set forth in the LDO for rezonings. First, there are six criteria that are found in Section 341E. There is no error here, but clearly there are changed conditions in this part of Cary. The large amount of residential development that has occurred in the area and that will occur in the future has created a significant demand for additional commercial services. Green Level Church Road and Carpenter Fire Station Road are well-improved major thoroughfares that have available capacity, and the intersection is currently functioning well as a commercial node. The site falls within the Northwest Area Plan. The PDP complies with the plan that recommends commercial or medium-density residential, and as staff pointed out, that plan change was approved in February 2016. Staff has confirmed there is adequate infrastructure to the site, and we also want to note that this development will not place any additional burden on an already overcrowded Wake County public school system. The preservation The preservation of open space corridor, the Greenway Connection, and Stormwater Management Plan will mitigate any adverse impacts on the natural environment. Given the zoning conditions, which provide additional buffer generous separation between buildings and the property, residential property, the restriction of uses, and the creation of walkable goods and services and public gathering spaces, we believe the proposed development will have a positive impact on nearby properties. We believe the proposed zoning classification is suitable for the property. As you know, we have voluntarily placed the property in an overlay district, which requires the applicant to submit a preliminary development plan, which you see before you, which does tie down much more specifically the uses and the relationship of those uses and buildings on the property. In addition to the above criteria, when you are in a mixed-use overlay district, there are additional standards that must be adhered to. Intensity type and mix of uses. The uses proposed in the PDP are appropriate, both with intensity type and mix. The scale of the buildings are appropriate for the location. Height is limited to a maximum of 50 feet. As staff pointed out, we have taken out uses that we feel are inappropriate for this site. And we have also identified and have conditions that talk about the, the use of dumpsters and those types of things in terms of collection of, like I said, dumpsters and pickup. The uses will be a mix of commercial and office uses, which we believe will serve the needs of the neighborhoods. We do meet the town's design guidelines. We have provided an additional buffer. The buffer has been enhanced. There is excellent connectivity throughout the site and to the adjacent properties, both vehicular and pedestrian. Again, the uses that are proposed are in compliance with the current land use plan. As far as the public places part, the PDP does include building and parking that is oriented to create a Main Street design with a centralized plaza. We do have an aggregate area of 7,000 square feet, and the inclusion of such amenities as a decorative fountain, public outdoor seating, and/or public art. The PDP demonstrates that the proposed development is appropriate for the area and provides reasonable transitions within and adjacent to the area. The site is adjacent to Arlington Park, which is a medium density community. As staff pointed out, Arlington Park does have a 30-foot vegetated buffer adjacent to our site. In addition to this buffer, we have added buffer ranging from 20 to 30 feet in width. There'll be a solid fence, heavily landscaped. We've also stated that the buffer is required to be opaque. In the narrowest part of the separation between the neighborhood and the development, we have added additional plantings, including a double row of staggered evergreens, which will be eight feet at planting and will grow to 18 feet. It is important to note again that we have increased the separation between the anchor, the largest building, and the residential area to 200 feet. Originally, it was 100 feet. And again, as I pointed out, there are zoning conditions prohibiting certain uses, limiting hours of operation and deliveries, and pickup of trash from the dumpsters. With the PDP, we have also addressed lighting, which was a concern of the residential area. And we've capped the light pole heights to minimize light trespass and to ensure appropriate transition. Just as an aside, we are working with the property owners with a private agreement to address issues that cannot be part of the zoning case. And also, we have agreed to create a neighborhood advisory committee, if this project is approved, to consult with Sembler on matters such as architecture, colors, and the best use of the gathering space. The proposed rezoning must also comply with applicable comprehensive plan or area plan requirements. Again, the proposed PDP and rezoning complies with the comprehensive plan and the Northwest Area Plan. We are also complying with the principles of the growth management plan. One of the principles discusses increased permitted densities in preferred growth areas. As pointed out by staff, this principle typically applies to residential rezonings. However, in our opinion, we do believe this location is a preferred growth area. The proposed non-residential development is in keeping with the current non-residential development, and we believe that what we're proposing is at a scale appropriate for the existing residential development. Again, we believe if this area was more intense, it would be, it would not be compatible with the adjacent residential area. Again, there is adequate infrastructure to the area. One of the principles is talking about concentrating growth near existing and planned employment centers. We are near RTP and the Austin Regional Center. And again, we believe that we are protecting the sensitive natural resources within the PDP by showing the areas of open space that we are preserving and protecting. In summary, we believe the proposed rezoning complies with all relevant sections of the LDO that address rezonings. As staff pointed out, we were asked to meet with the community after the public hearing. We want to note that we have had, including the required neighborhood meeting, we've met eight separate times with the neighbors. And in addition to these meetings, we've also, there's been phone calls, the residents have met separately. So there's been a lot of dialogue that's gone on between us and the neighbors within Arlington Park, who are the most impacted by the development. At each of these meetings, we have agreed to make changes, and these changes have been incorporated into the plan, and I'd just like to go over the key ones. There was the importance of having a Main Street feel, having a development. That was something that the community could go to and enjoy and feel that it was part of their community. We did revise the building orientation and parking orientation to provide a centralized plaza with the minimum aggregate area of 7,000 square feet. We committed to at least one of the following: a decorative fountain, public outdoor seating, or public art. We have committed to decorative pedestrian lighting at the Main Street, enhanced hardscapes. And again, we've restricted uses and service hours, and we've enhanced the buffer and greater separation. Again, we believe that the proposal that's before you tonight is a walkable, walkable development, and that it does blend in with the area, with the neighborhood, and that the need for these additional commercial uses are in place today. The Sembler Company is committed to being a good neighbor and wants the proposed development to be an asset to the community, and I think this has been shown in a number of meetings that they've had. And with that, we ask for the board's support. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll now open the public hearing for this case. First person to like to speak, just come on down.
So, good evening, everyone. This is my second time to face to a committee and speaking English.
May we have your name, please?
My name is Shin. He's like the bone. And so, just forgive me if I'm too nervous, and then like sometimes I need maybe a little break. So first, I want to ask, may I allow to present some evidence?
Absolutely. If you just give it to the clerk, she'll take care of having it to us.
I didn't know there were nine, so I only printed out eight.
We'll share.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, really appreciate this opportunity for me to come like, for you hear my voice here. And also, I would like to thank the developer and the engineer. They have been organizing many meetings with us. But there was something very bothering me. So if you look at the first picture, that's the situation right now, which my, two of my children sit there, yes, that one, and said the road closed for future extension somehow. So my kids, they play there, and then we are, we feel very comfortable. It was a very good corner. But then, regarding the development plan, we felt like, okay, that's okay, as long as, you know, that corner is still maintained. However, in the last two, actually, the two weeks ago, the last meeting with the developer, they told us the cul-de-sac need to be there, which that was surprising to us. We, we felt like this is something we, we never heard about it. I mean, in the before, we all agreed to say, okay, that end is closed. And by the way, I lived on the, the last unit of that Jockey Club Circle, which is right at that corner. So previously, the, the lady and the gentleman presented some reason for that cul-de-sac to be exist because of the solid waste truck. But you all know, they always loaded the garbage can from the right side, so the, the truck always actually back into that unit and then pick up the trash from my unit and pick up the trash from my neighbor's unit. And then they go straight to the other cul-de-sac and then take it around. And then the only car or the truck need to turn around there is the post office car, and which you know, it can be turned easily there. So we believe that cul-de-sac is not necessary there, and also we felt like we have been misled somehow, deceived is a little bit too strong word, which I don't want to put here. So I would like to ask the board to please protect my family, particularly from the noise. Because with that cul-de-sac, there is going to be a visibility under the noise, which if you look at on the second picture, that's the future plan they have. So you can see, you can see through the building to the Publix. And you can't imagine, like, when I told people what that looks, sounds like, I've told them that was sounds like another airport adjacent to me. And we also discussed with an engineer about like this situation, say, are we going to hear trucks and the noise? And he said, no. So that's really big concern for us. The deliver times were started around like 6:00 AM, which, you know, the, the Wake County School, they started around like 8:45 to 9 o'clock. So if my kids, they can't really have enough sleep, then I can't imagine they have a full energy to enjoy their recess time and the learning time in the school. So what we, we're not really, I mean, at least I am not really super strong against the development there. However, I strongly urge the, the plan need to be revised, at least for that public store need to be reoriented with the loading dock faced to the Green Level Church Road, if it is as possible. And I think that will be reducing the noise, and also if that cul-de-sac can be removed, or even be, the, the engineer provided alternative plan, which is, is a little bit further to the Publix. However, it's still very close to my house, and the visibility, I, I don't really think is going to be improved, plus it's not guaranteed. That, that depends on the property, using property from the, the HOA. So with that, I want to...
I'm afraid I've got to tell you your time is up, sir.
Yeah, sorry. I just finished it. So thank you very much for listening to me, and please consider about my...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, board members. My name is Tucker McKenzie. I'm with Withers Raffnau, the engineering firm for the Luda property. I had a fairly long talking point, but Glenda and staff has done a fairly good job of covering all the changes that have made. Wanted to point out, I do have some handouts for you. In those handouts, you'll see a colored rendering, that's on the screen, of the current site plan. Where we started, when we originally, there's a, the second page is where we started with the original proposal, just to give you a context of the major amount of changes that were made. And also throughout there, you'll see some different renderings of the community spaces and the connections to Northland. And I think also there's a rendering of Main Street. As you're looking at that, to gentleman's point, we've, we've worked hard with the neighborhood. We've had eight meetings with them in finding, and we're continuing to work with them to find what a palatable solution to the termination of Jockey Club Circle is. The render, I don't know what render, we provided some renderings to give them some, what we believe to be some perspectives on how, when this is developed, how it's going to look, so that he could fully, so we could engage in a conversation on how, what's the best solution there. With the, you can see that with the change in the plan from the old to the new, we've provided additional separation from everyone's house, from the main Publix building to, to the neighborhood. In addition, we've provided additional separation from any of the other development. As you move, the plans rotated, but as you move further north, we provide additional separation. As we've heard from neighbors constantly, that the more separation we can provide, the better. With that, I don't think I have much more will be available for answering any of your questions, but as far as the termination, we did, so we did seek the modification waiver on Jockey Club Circle. With that modification, the requirement came into effect that a cul-de-sac is required there. So we showed the cul-de-sac on our property now, with the intent of working with the neighbors to find whatever the palatable solution may be with the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. So folks, my name is Santosh Shetty, and I live in the same subdivision, which is mostly affected with this, with this new thing coming on. And today, we don't have much representation. It's been, I mean, we have been having this kind of discussion for the last six months or eight months, and we have given our position for the connectivity into the Northland Drive. So one thing, one thing actually we came to know is, there is an option in the next phases where the developer can actually go through a separate hearing to remove the connectivity. And during multiple discussion of the developers, one thing is, we didn't hear from them the commitment, whether they want to really go to that phase, you know, where they can go through a quasi judicial hearing to remove the, to remove the connection. That is the biggest, biggest opposition what we have, you know. Today, we don't have much of the guys today here, but we have been talking about this opposition in the last four hearings. You know, this, this community has been there from last 10 years. It's not like from last one or two years. If there was a need of a cul-de-sac for, for a U-turn, there was a need for that from the day one, but this community is there for last 10 years, you know. And similarly, the Northland Drive, we are totally against with that particular, with that connectivity, and we would want to get a commitment from the developer that if there is a possibility of this connectivity can be removed through a quasi judicial hearing, it should be removed. Thank you.
Good evening, Tom Heraeus, the Sembler Company. Good evening, chairman, board, staff, town in Cary. Thank you for all your time. Just here to summarize our efforts. It was pretty crystal clear when we first came before the town council back in September. There was probably about 70 to 80 residents who had a concern with our proposed initial plan. We've had subsequent, at least eight, maybe possibly nine, formal resident meetings where we've invited with formal notices to 300 residents, and we've averaged anywhere from about 10 to 15 folks for each of the meetings. And the meetings have been very meaningful. They've usually lasted anywhere from two to four hours, very productive, great work sessions. A lot of the ideas and concepts that you see before you tonight are a result of that effort and that process, and it's a process that really worked. We heated the, the call from the town council and staff to work closely with the residents. We continue to do so. It's very... It's very important. This is a process. There are a lot of details that are important that still have to occur in these, in these projects. So we're committed to follow through with the process all the way to the end. That's been a commitment we've made from day one. So I just wanted to reassure the board and the public that we're not going anywhere. We meet often. We have trace papers, sketches. We love ideas. We're pretty creative. But we're also very pragmatic. You know, we own and operate several shopping centers in the fine southeast. We know how they work, what's appropriate, what's not. We believe in, you know, maintaining success of first, second, third, fourth, fifth generation tenant occupancies. So we are very proud of a track record of having about 96% occupied shopping centers in our portfolio that was maintained through the Great Recession. So we're very proud of knowing how to handle these projects, what to do on a daily basis. So we're here, very committed. And we've worked with Mr. Shin Shu just recently with the last couple of meetings, and he's been very passionate with a lot of his requirements. We had a meeting as of last Thursday night with the folks at Levon Jockey Club Circle to kind of hone in exactly what more additional things that we have to do. So we're here to continue working. We know it's a process, so we just wanted to make sure that that point was well made. We appreciate all your time. Staff has done a great job. They've been very thorough, very reticent, and we just appreciate your support for the approval of this project. We think it's an exciting project. It's totally co-authored with the residents and the community. I think that's very exciting. Hopefully, it sets a precedent forward for projects that have a challenge before you all. So we're very proud of the effort, and we've had a great success with many of the residents and a super team that's all worked very well together and continues to do so. So based on tonight's representation of residents compared to where we started in September 8th, as a measurement, hopefully, of positive progress and success, I hope that's a worthwhile measuring tool. And thank you all. I'll not take up any more time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Bell Maddox, attorney for Zimbler. Just wanted, just focus on two points. The two speakers with some degree of opposition spoke about the cul-de-sac at Jockey Circle, which we, we did seek a waiver there, and we got the waiver, but we're required to terminate that with a cul-de-sac. That's a code requirement that we really can't do anything about. On the Northlands connection, that's the other major objection. Again, that's a code requirement, and we really can't change that. We have, the one thing we have done is, we've agreed to enter into a private agreement with these neighbors to provide some support for doing some things at those two points to maybe help them with some additional landscaping, maybe help them with some funds for the neighborhood for traffic calming on Northlands. They've had a concern about that. So we, we continue to work with them, continue to talk to them about things we might be able to do to mitigate any impacts that those two features may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there another speaker for this rezoning case? Anyone at all? All right, I will close the public hearing then, and we will now begin questions of the applicant and of the staff. On the side, anyone have any questions?
It mentioned in the staff report that the open space corridor, that they hadn't committed to giving us the full, I believe it's 200 feet along that, the Morris branch. They're on the right.
Okay.
They would... While she's looking this up, when we created the, this Northwest area plan, there were a lot of moving parts to it. You know, the Southwest area and the Northwest area were balanced. And the part of the, well, I guess the big consideration was the protection of Jordan Lake. And it was all farmland, there was nothing. So in return for the enhanced densities in this area, the things that make these shopping centers possible and the medium density residency and all of this building, was that there was an enhanced buffer on either side of the branches that lead to Jordan Lake. And according to the staff report, it sounds like everyone has been honoring that, except in this particular case. Is that true? Or how much, how much deviation is there?
I'm not familiar with that specific requirement beyond what's written in the staff report.
So I'll speak to it just a little bit. We found out about this through the staff report also. So as we went through this, we were unaware of, well, we have come to find out that's a recommendation of the Northwest area plan, not a requirement necessarily. After doing additional research, we're going to work with staff as we go through this, and we can provide an open space corridor of some degree to, we believe we can get to the average of the 200-foot width in total of the recommendation. But we, we want to, we'll, we'll have to evaluate that further as we get into, with staff and understand exactly what that, how that shapes out. But we are, we are committed to providing some open space corridor along Morris Branch to meet that recommendation to the maximum extent practical.
Okay.
And I would, just, thanks for that clarification with that, with that, where there are some requirements from the plan, if they're not codified in the ordinance, it's not an actual requirement at the time of the zoning, so that it would be, the applicant could provide, you know, those additional requirements, or that could certainly be a comment or discussion related to how you feel it complies with that aspect of the comprehensive plan.
Okay. So it's a recommendation like those notes that were on the maps? That, I mean, because my understanding was, it was part of the Northwest area plan, and, you know, it was a requirement. Now I might be, you know, confusing terms with plans and...
The plan itself is a policy document, and that's why when we look, look to the consistency statements, and that was certainly an area that you could look at and make, make your determination as to whether you think that is, is or is not consistent with the plan. But it's not a requirement of the land development ordinance.
According to the staff report, though, everyone else, and it's a very, it's a very hefty price to pay, but everyone else has done that.
Any other questions on the side?
I have a couple. So I'm kind of struggling, I'm experimenting to understand what's going on with this cul-de-sac here. So we have a planning director that has waived the connectivity, but yet the applicant is still required now to put in a cul-de-sac.
There, there are two different issues, really. One is the, the connectivity requirement that the planning director is authorized to waive. In, in this case, the street, the street stubs at the property line, and there, the design standards of the ordinance require that that terminate in a way that meets the land development ordinance at the time of development. If, if such a termination isn't required, you know, with this development or done at this point, then that opportunity would, would be lost if the site is developed. So in order, in order to comply with the design standards for the streets and that termination, again, some of the issues that come into play with the solid waste vehicles, for example, where we now have different types of vehicles, some of them that are, that have the arms with them that are operated by the driver and may not have other, other staff on those vehicles. So there's some, there's a, a need to make sure that, that the street stubs have a sufficient turnaround point that can be accessed by all of our vehicles. Again, this is something that could be waived or reduced or looked at through a quasi judicial process, where if there are alternatives for how to address that termination point, that could certainly be looked at at that time with more thorough evaluation by our engineering staff related to the dimensions and how that turnaround could, could work. At the point of the rezoning, the plan would need to show a turnaround that is, that meets the basic requirements of our standards without, without looking at modifications of that to try to better accommodate a particular situation. It's not to say that that can't be done, but it would need to be done through the quasi judicial process. And again, to point out, we have made some recent changes through that, through that process, where if that moves forward to Town Council, they would, they would look solely at these, you know, portions of the development where some waiver is requested for, as opposed to looking at the entire site plan. But that, that is an option, but again, at a future step.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification there. I have one other question, and it's going to be about, and I believe in the traffic study, it's referred to as Site Driveway 1, which is the northernmost. Looks like there's a little signal. Correct. So am I correct to assume that that is a zoning condition to have that signal in? Or it's shown here as a proposed future signal?
There is a signal requirement. Well, in the traffic study, there are a number of mitigations proposed or recommended, and the applicant did include those mitigations in the, as part of the conditions that are committed to. That includes the basic configuration of the road improvements and the driveway accesses along the property, as well as the addition or kind of extension of a southbound through lanes further to the north at McCrimmon Parkway. So there are some road conditions or road improvements that are listed on the preliminary development plan that are commitments.
So, and let me ask you another question on that. So what I'm kind of getting at here is, obviously, traffic for anyone who knows this area is a nightmare for here. So I really like the idea of putting the signal in. Now, is that contingent on a warrant analysis by NC DOT? Or are we pretty much guaranteed that that's going to be signalized as part of this development?
I can't speak to the timing with that in terms of any warrant analysis. I don't know if Mr. Konda has any additional information on that.
Because I know before we've talked about that, it needs to be warranted before it can be put in. So I just don't know if that's something that's already been done, or...
Can I add on the funding of that, too, please?
Right.
Hi. My understanding is that the development across the street on the other side of Green Level Church has a commitment to put in a signal if a signal is warranted. And with the traffic from that development, as well as traffic from this development, it is very likely that it'll be warranted once, once all the proposed retail is occupied. And that's why this applicant has kind of tied into that commitment that once, once RKM development puts in a signal, or when they do a traffic warrant analysis, they're going to include their traffic. And then it would, it would, they would also work with them to have, add a fourth leg to that intersection. Like, like Ms. Beerman said, the timing of that is currently unknown.
Okay. Now, and I kind of understand that. So that mitigation effort, you could categorize that as a shared effort? Like, either way, if one of the developments falls through, like, that's still a requirement on one or the other development, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But can I add to that?
Yes.
As with the case with the, another proposed housing development, they made the commitment to put the money in a, remember, we had the, the funding? How's the funding for the light going to happen?
I don't believe it is a funding. It is actually a commitment to conduct a signal warrant analysis. And if the signal is warranted, they would have to install the signal.
Who would install the signal?
The development across the street.
Okay.
And then they would have to adjust that signal for adding the fourth leg and adding additional signal heights.
If, I, I don't mean to stick my nose in your, your question here, but if I remember correctly, that was one side of a development, but there, it was still undetermined on the other side, so they were going to put the money, you know, sort of hold it out there. But here, both sides are being developed, so we'll know really quickly whether a warrant will be issued and who to go send the bill to. I think that's where it's different from the case where, if, if we're thinking in the same case, I...
I am.
Yeah, that was the case I was thinking of. And from what you've said, it sounds like this is pretty much going to almost be guaranteed that this is going to warrant a signal, correct?
I haven't seen a signal warrant analysis, so I don't know if it, if it's going to be warranted at this point. But once both developments are built out, then it'll be warranted, for sure.
Okay, okay. That's what I was getting at.
But I guess I just don't want us holding the bag that it has, the timing involves later and that we have to pay for that light, because it's not been funded or anticipated. Like with the other case, even though it was a possibility, at least the money was presented as a possibility. And I'm confused here, so I don't know if I'm asking the question correctly.
Well, let me see if I can try. Mike Horn with Kimmy Horn and Associates, been working with the Zimbler Corporation on the traffic aspect of this project. To answer your question, there's actually two groups that actually are on the hook for the signal. It's the RKM site across the street, as well as Zimbler has come forward. And if their development goes faster, you know, gets, you know, gets moving along faster than RKM, and their traffic comes forward, and they warrant the signal, they'll put it in. Vice versa, if RKM moves forward their traffic, they would then have to put it in. The Town and Carey will never pay for the signal.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you.
We'll stand aside here. Any, any other questions? I have, just, I'm curious, I know the condition is to limit buildout space to 110,000 square feet. What would have, any idea what it would have been if without that condition?
Without that condition, it would just, without a preliminary development plan, it would just be based on the uses, what you could get with the parking to have a considerably larger building of, so there would, that would, there wouldn't be really an upper limit beyond what you could do to provide all the parking and the buffers and meet all the requirements.
One other question, and it may not be germane to the Planning and Zoning Board, but I'll ask it anyway. So you just, has to do with the lighting. I, I heard conditions in terms of some of the pedestrian lighting and lighting for the walkway. I guess maybe this would be a site review. I'm thinking about light pollution. I know this was an earlier concern of some of the neighbors about the amount of light at night. And I don't know whether there's some standards for masthead height, et cetera, for parking lots that would help to minimize, or any discussion about trying to minimize any kind of light pollution, particularly on the, what would be the west side, you know, on the residential side?
There are requirements in the ordinance regarding lighting that limit the height of poles and also require the cutoff fixtures where the light spills downward and not, not outward. So there are already requirements within the ordinance that deal with that, and to some extent, some of that is repeated within the, the text in the preliminary development plan, just as an assurance. But there's, there are lighting provisions that the town requires, anyway. In addition to that, the applicant has, you know, is looking at the decorative, you know, more the decorative poles that would be more attractive pole fixtures. And then those would have a lower, lower height that would be no more than 20 feet.
Okay.
Just a little clarification. Some of the decorative lighting is hard to shield. So the intent with that decorative lighting would be more centralized onto the Main Street area. So that's more of a pedestrian friendly, not necessarily pedestrian friendly, because it is 20 feet high, up to 20 feet high. But it's a, it's a slower level than the rest of the parking areas. In addition to the cutoff fixtures, we're providing shielded, any lights that would be on the neighborhood side, we would provide shielded lights. I know that's more of a site plan issue necessarily, but that's kind of the commitment we've made, that if there are lights that would be on the, close to the neighborhood side, those would be shielded to help. In addition to meet, you know, meet the required LEO standard, we would have shielded lights adjacent to that property.
And we do look at the lighting plan at the time of the site plan to actually look at the, the amount of light at the perimeter of the property.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions on this side? We'll stay on this end of the table for the moment. No? Any questions?
I have one.
Back over here.
So I just want to clarify, when you first were introducing the case tonight, I think you mentioned that the city council did something earlier in the year to approve this as a high-density?
There was a comprehensive plan amendment that was approved for this... There was a comprehensive plan amendment that was approved for this property. When this first went to public hearing, the plan designation for this property was initially medium-density to high-density residential. That went through the process, including going through the planning and zoning board, and then on to council for a decision. And that decision was made in February, and they did vote to approve the requested plan amendment that changed the designation from medium to high-density to commercial or medium-density.
Okay. So if this, there are options beyond this that could result in a higher density if this weren't to go through, potentially?
Well, the, the other, the other option would be medium residential development.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait, any questions?
I've got one. I'm still a little confused as to what's going on with the commitment regarding drive-throughs. And if somebody from the developer could address this. I'm looking at this request disposition, where item is, will be addressed. And it's a little confusing as I read through it.
I would say, as the plan is, is written, the commitment is, my understanding of the, with this is the, there's a commitment to not allow drive-throughs in this central portion of the development. But the other areas, you know, the, the other buildings would have the potential for a drive-through. It's not excluded as a potential use. The only areas where it's excluded as a potential use is in development area, I believe that's referred to as development area 2, which is the central area.
Let me make sure my terminology is correct. I'm understanding a drive-through to be something like a Wendy's or a Starbucks.
It could be, restaurants that are allowed to have a drive-through.
So you're saying, you're saying your understanding is that that would be the buildings closest to Governor Fire Station Road?
Yes, the buildings closest to the street, these buildings in this area, this building, and also there could be a drive-through, if, if, if this is a grocery store, for example, typically associated with a drive-through pharmacy, that would be a possibility in this building as well.
Did we get that right? Okay. Didn't get you for a minute. Just checking.
I'd also like to ask if we could get just a short clarification from the developer regarding the issue that was raised by the citizen concerning the loading dock? I'd like to hear from the developer about that.
So with the revised plan, as well, we thought it was important to have both plans. With the revised plans, we, we have pushed the loading dock significantly away from the, from our original area. As far as directly to the citizen's request, as far as rotating the building so that the front would be facing his site. The problem with that is, is meeting the, the parking ratio for the building and getting truck access. It just, the site pinches. It's narrow, it's more narrow than it is wide, as you're looking at it on this plan. And so to provide the circulation required, and to provide the necessary parking to meet the necessary LEO requirements and design standards, it just, it doesn't, all of those entities don't fit. So it doesn't, we, we're not able to rotate the building in a number of manners. We have evaluated that, like, through our process with, with our numerous meetings, we did evaluate that directly. We, we, we've looked at every way to skin this cat to make it palatable for the neighbors because we knew that was, that's who we needed to buy off on this, is it, were the neighbors.
Can you answer me a question on that drawing? Is the loading dock, the two little rectangles on the top by the cul-de-sac, or is that back there? Okay, fine. Thank you.
That's correct.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
And it's, it's further, so there's a 200-foot setback to the building, but the, the loading dock itself is further back.
It's further than it was.
It is further, correct.
Does anyone else have any other questions, or do we want to put a motion out and kick it around a little bit?
Sure. I'll put a motion out. Let me see if I get the right number. I move that the Board forward case number 15-RZ-16 to the town council with recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for reasons set forth in the staff represent, report and presentation.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? I'll second. Nancy, please.
I, I think this has come a long way. I really, with eight meetings and as, obviously, there's no TV, no people, of considering the plan, I mean, there's still a few little things that need to be tweaked that we can't fix here. So I would say a lot of progress has been made. I think there's going to be a good neighborhood feeling with the main street, and it's going to be an asset, I think, in the long run to this neighborhood to have this, this plan done for them. So, and I think it's going to help the general area also, so. I would like to see the, the square, the footage on that, the greenway area, but hopefully that will be worked out.
Mr. Farland?
I guess, yeah, I, it's, having, the, the board has followed this for a while, and I've seen that the, there's, the citizens have had opportunity for a lot of input. Still some, some things to be addressed potentially that can't be addressed by this board or in this proceeding. But the developer has certainly worked hard to try to listen to what was being asked for, taking that into consideration, adjusting buildings configurations, potentially even their business plan behind it, but I'm very happy to see the transportation part that's a lot of opportunities for entrance and exit, et cetera. So I think it's, for that piece of property, I think it's, I think it's, it's a good plan.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to comment on this motion, especially if you're going to oppose it? I'd like to hear that.
I'm going to oppose it. That's probably no surprise, since I opposed the land use amendment. I, you know, I try to keep an open mind about this because the board did decide to, you know, allow commercial uses here. You know, the other option would be medium-density residential, which I would have preferred, considering there were other sites in the area that were suitable for this. But, you know, even looking at this, there's nothing in this plan that changes my mind. It looks like a sea of parking. I don't see where the residents really got anything that they asked for. There's potential drive-throughs, there's a large retail building, there's connectivity everywhere, the open space corridor isn't being preserved. I, I just don't see anything to love about this plan, so I am not going to support the motion.
Anyone else like to say something? Yes?
I'm going to support this motion, but with a heavy heart, because I live in this neighborhood, and I've seen large developments being built in the last two years since I moved here, and they're still struggling to even lease space, to the space that they've built. So I really question whether this truly is going to be the enhancement to the community that it's being put forth. But I do appreciate very much the, what's been presented here today in terms of the collaboration that the developer has tried to do with the residents, the, the numerous meetings. You know, it's clear that there's been great effort to, to make this work, to put this But, you know, I, I just really wonder, in the long run, if this is, if this is truly the best fit. I do, however, feel that given the options, I'd choose this over medium-to-high-density housing, because I've also seen what that looks like in my neighborhood too. And there are no trees, absolutely nothing with the, with the density of residential housing that's being built in my neighborhoods, regardless of what the requirements may be for buffers and whatnot. So that's my position.
Does anyone else care to share anything before we take this to a vote?
I guess I can go down the line here. I'm going to, I guess, join with Carla in opposition to this. I think overall and conceptually, I like the idea of commercial in this area. I definitely supported the CPA, and I do like this developing in this sort of manner. I just don't think we're there yet. I don't think this plan is really the best option, and it's, I really think the developer has put forth a lot of, a tremendous amount of effort, which is something we don't necessarily see all the time with meeting with the residents, the number of meetings, the hours put in, meeting with the demands put on them. But I just think that the, the plan itself falls short. I was expecting to see something a little more innovative, something a little more different. When I look at it, it's really just another big bucks retailer. Nothing really stands out to me, and I just know that we can do more with this, with this area to better serve the residents, so therefore, I'm going to oppose it.
Anyone else? All right, I'll throw my two cents in before we call this to a vote. This case is, to me, represents so much of, of the public and applicant interaction, but it only can go so far as, because I think Mr. McFarland said it really well, there are many things that just go beyond this board. There's things we don't decide in a rezoning. That cul-de-sac is going to be decided way further down the line, long after you have a chance to have input anymore. I mean, once the council rezones this, that's the last for the big rooms and suits and ties and people making votes. From then on, it's, it's down to quasi-judicial hearings that are fact-based only and, and much more rubber-meets-the-road X's and O's. But yet, those are some of the most important things that have to be decided. So many times, we look at these things and we're just hoping that what we think is going to come through is going to come through. And, and it kind of flips on its head what I said to, with, with that other person who said earlier this evening that, oh, a connectivity issue is a done deal, and it's going to happen. I said, don't, don't be so hasty about that. Well, in some cases, we have to flip that upside down and say, well, don't be so hasty thinking that cul-de-sac's going to disappear. And we just never know. And, and we have to vote and, and make recommendations based on what we know the ordinance says, what we think might happen, the developers, or the, the applicants already work so well with the, with the neighborhood, what they might still do, and there's many of those things are just still unknown to us. And we, we do the best we can to, to, to deal in the here and now with an eye towards what, what might be. And this is one of those cases where just so many things out there are, are still, still yet to be decided that are so important to the people who spoke to us, and we just don't have an answer for it. And it's a frustration, but it's the system we live in. So after that downer, I'll, I'll call this to a vote. Would all those in favor of 15-RZ-16 being approved, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, would you say no, please?
No.
Two noes. This motion passes seven to two. And I believe we're done with our public hearings, and I thank the folks who stuck around for, for the public hearings. It's been so far a long night. We still have more to go, and I'd like to take about a five-minute recess before we pick up with our four cases that do not entail a public hearing.
So that somebody can dispose of a piece of property, residential construction, you know, single home fits in that neighborhood well, so.
I concur, I'm not sure there's much to add other than, you know, I think it's consistent with the LDR designation and, you know, one house for that size lot, I think is more than adequate.
Anyone else? Anything else?
Yeah, I agree, I think when they switch that from two lots to one, my fears went away right then and there.
All right, well, all those in favor of 15 REZ 32 being approved, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed, say no, please. Motion carries unanimously, we are on to Silverton, excuse me, PDD Amendment 16 REZ 04.
Thank you, this is a piece of property located at 1401 Evans Road on 4.31 acres, it's on the south side of Evans Road and to the east of Winfair Drive. Aerial view shows the existing conditions, it is improved with a swimming pool, clubhouse, tennis courts, and a small outdoor athletic field. There are no issues according to Cary's most recent GIS maps with stream buffers or floodways, or with Cary's master plan for Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources facilities. Winfair Drive is a major collector road and Evans Road is a thorough fair. Transit route located along Northwest Cary Parkway is proposed. Land use plan designation is Parks and Open Space. The existing zoning is Planned Development District. This was a PDD approved, now called a, PDD used to be called a PUD back in 1987, that identified the property as Active Recreation, and then an amendment to other areas in 1992 changed it to Silverton Swim and Tennis Club. So why is it here before you tonight for a rezoning? It's to clarify exactly what's proposed, give it a better description, commercial indoor/outdoor recreation, clarify that buffer on the southern property line to its higher performance standards, limit the use specifically to swimming pool, tennis courts, accessory uses such as snack bar, multipurpose room, restrooms, and non-lighted multipurpose field which is existing today. And then the applicant has proposed, after hearing concerns at the public hearing, or from the neighborhood meetings, to limit the height of any structure to 32 feet. The applicant's proposing to enhance that buffer along the southern property line to a Type B semi-opaque standard. There were concerns expressed at the community meetings from neighbors about traffic aesthetics of the proposed pool cover that's going to go over the existing swimming pool, and some gaps in the buffer, so that's why the applicant responded with the zoning conditions they came forward with. During the town council public hearing, there were some questions about the town's architectural design standards. Cary has requirements for masonry structures, so instead of just metal poles, they would have to actually put posts that supported this proposed pool cover that were either brick, or stone, or some high-quality masonry material. Several council members did voice support for the amendment. So this concludes staff's presentation, I know the applicant is available if you have any questions, or in case there's anything more to add. I think that pretty much covers everything, so we're both available if you have any questions.
Nothing to add, or just want to wait for questions?
I'll add something. It's hard for me not to. But I'll be short. Glenda Top with Glenda's Top and Associates, I'm here on behalf of the applicant who is looking to purchase the property. Ms. Grandin did an excellent job going over the proposal. What I'd like to pass out is, there were questions at the meeting, public hearing, about the structure. Two different copies, as part of the process, we did meet with the planning staff to understand what the requirements would be for a permanent structure to meet the design guidelines. And as you can see from the pictures that are being passed out, in some ways, it looks like it could be a wedding venue, the way the tent is, the flaps are pulled back, but the columns that are shown, although at the meeting, they could potentially be like stone, but right now, they are envisioned to be brick. The tent will be gray in order to blend in with the neighborhood. Just to add to what Ms. Grandin said, this is a property that's been in Silverton for many, many years, it's privately owned, membership is both with people who live within Silverton and without. The use of the pool is not going to change from what it's currently being used. Current members will have access to the pool, the biggest difference is these people will have access to the pool 12 months out of the year. If you've gone by the site, the site is somewhat rundown. The gentleman, Paul Silver, who runs the Marlins of Raleigh, is the one who wants to purchase the pool, and I can assure you that his buying that pool will turn it into a facility that will both be a positive asset to the community, and to those people who live in Cary who now have to drive pretty far to have swimming lessons, that they'll be able to use this pool in this area as a place to practice. And in closing, it was important to the residents to be clear in what was proposed on the site, which is why we went back and clarified the uses, clarified the use, talked about the buffer next to Fisher's Creek subdivision. And the other thing I want to add is, as far as visibility, there are streetscapes that are required adjacent to this site. When the site plan comes in, they'll have to comply with the requirements, if there's vegetation lacking, then they would have to supplement the plant material. With that, I will close, if you also have questions about the pool enclosure, the gentleman who does that is here, and Mr. Paul Silver is here also, if you have further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now time for questions of the applicant and the staff, I see that there are some.
Yeah, I have one question of the applicant, please. Lighting, is this going to be opened during the summer?
My name's Chris Carver, I'm the builder, and I've built several of these facilities, and as far as the lighting goes, it'll be open, the side panels will be taken down during the summer, so it'll be like an open-air pavilion, and as far as lighting goes, it'll have uplighting at the, like, at the top of each of the columns, basically on the inside, lighting the inside interior roof.
So we're not going to have big, huge poles, lights coming in?
No. And the last one that I built was in Raleigh, not Cary, but I imagine the same requirements will be required, that it will have emergency egress downlighting on the columns around the perimeter throughout the fire escape paths, but they don't have any horizontal projection. Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
What is the distance between these support columns and the actual pool?
It varies depending on which side you're speaking of, but the columns will be about eight feet outside of the, on average, about eight feet outside the perimeter of the pool.
The perimeter pool.
That's correct.
You said you've built several of these, would you have chosen this type of a rectangular post-support for the roof if you had your drawers?
I would have not, no, I would have not have chosen that, and that, it's not actually going to be the post-support, it's basically going to be a veneer that will stand off, it's an engineered structure that has give and flexibility, and the aluminum posts will have to be there, because the wind loading on the structure, if the sides are off in the environment of a hurricane or a tropical storm, the aluminum has to give with the structure so it can move, so the brick, it'll basically be masonry shielding on the exterior perimeter of the building, so that from the outside, it appears that the structure sits on the bricks, but it will in fact sit on the aluminum posts that give it the flexibility to move with the wind.
And if I could just point out, the sketches and drawings are preliminary, they're not part of the rezoning. That's based on our current architectural design standards that calls for 75% masonry on the permanent structures, so we don't require any treatment with a roof, so that can be the canvas dome, the sides are like windows, that's not going to have a requirement for the masonry material, but that's just a conceptual rendering of what you could possibly expect on the site.
We can make it look like bricks. It will be bricks, it'll look like a brick building as far as the columns go, to meet the standard.
I'm just a little fearful that our standards are a little too strict in a situation like this, that's...
I would rather have my kid not break, put their head into a brick wall, but, okay.
It doesn't look very safe to me, number one, if you have kids running around.
Thank you, that's just...
You have, you know, sharp edges, etc., so excuse me for reacting to the visual, but, you know, I sat through our architectural standards workshop, and I got the feeling that there was some rigidity there that needed to be loosened up a little bit, and I don't know whether this is an example of it or not.
I have to agree with you, though, wet feet running into brick walls is not a good combination.
Yeah. I'm through.
I was just going to say, we are complying with the code. I know, I know, that was all.
At about the three-hour point in one of these meetings, they start telling you what they really think?
So, okay, any other questions? Then if not, could we put a motion forward?
I have a motion. I move that the board forward case number 16 REZ 04 to town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable, and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Would someone care to second that?
I'll second.
Ryan, floor two.
I think it's great that there's an owner that's willing to invest in this, this is obviously an older area, an older pool, so I think it's great to kind of revitalize it, throw additional funds to kind of reinvigorate it. I also think it's great that this area is going to have another option for a year-round pool, something that I think's somewhat lacking given this area.
I don't really have anything to add, except that any time I hear about improvements in recreational activities that can enhance the quality of life for kids, I'm all for it.
Anyone else? Then all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, we are on to 15 REZ 25.
Thank you, this is a request to amend a portion of the Seersstone Planned Development District, the Phase III portion, located at High House Road, the subject property is highlighted here in yellow, and an aerial view shows the existing conditions. Zoomed in aerial view, shows that a lot of the infrastructure is in place currently. There is a stream buffer, according to Cary's most recent GIS maps, and field determination of that feature will be required at the time of the development plan review. There is a required street-side trail, a portion of it has been completed in front of the commercial village portion of the Seersstone development, and then the dashed blue line shows where that will continue across the subject property. High House Road is a thorough fair, and there is an existing transit route along High House Road. The existing zoning is Planned Development District Major. The Seersstone development was initially approved back, gosh, in 2002, I believe initially. The last version of the plan is shown here in 2008, that showed a conceptual layout of cottage-style dwellings, similar to duplexes and triplexes, and what is proposed now is an amendment just to that Phase III portion of the plan, where the applicant is proposing to replace those duplex-style cottages with the same number of attached residential, so more of a multifamily-attached product rather than those estate homes or cottage homes. So there would be six structures, eight dwelling units per structure. In addition, the applicant is proposing to add two community recreation buildings and a water feature. The community recreation buildings, one of them would be a one-story building with 2,500 square feet maximum, and the second one would be a two-story building with the 2,500 square feet allowed per floor. And let me see if I can get back to the PowerPoint. This happened once before. I do not want to end the meeting with everyone. No, not yet. I wonder if we still have someone here from, just back to the PowerPoint presentation, I'm not sure why it's just stopped advancing. Yeah. Let's see if we can, there we go, okay. Thank you. So this is a color rendering that gives you a little bit of a better idea of what's being proposed. The tan area shows the six buildings, and then the dark purple shows the community gathering, activity centers, or recreation centers, water feature in the center. This area shows the streetscape buffer, which was reduced several years ago to a 30-foot wide buffer. And what I've pointed out here is, the current standards for a street-side trail is that it meander, this is the practice that's in place, it did not meander in front of the commercial development, but it does across the street with the Bradford development, this trail will tie into the Bradford development. The reason we point this out is just to make sure that there's an awareness, when you have a reduction in the existing streetscape, it may be difficult to get that full opacity that you might have gotten with a 50-foot buffer and the old-fashioned sidewalk-style trail. So it's just to make sure that there's an awareness and that it's on record, that when you have a slight meander in the street-side trail and a 30-foot reduction, you might not get the same opacity. One other thing that's being clarified and corrected with the PDD is to clearly denote that there is an existing BMP area here, and not enough room to put an opaque buffer between that BMP and the existing property line to the east, but there is a very significant stream buffer in that area, a lot of vegetation, no additional vegetation is proposed to be removed, but because of the dam and the BMP, we want the current document to reflect existing conditions, and not have this be any sort of violation, so it's proposed to clarify that as the plan goes through. And this clarifies staff's presentation, the applicant is present and prepared to answer any questions that you have, or correct me if I missed anything.
Okay, I'll steer clear of the mouse. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jason Varen with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. I would never correct Deborah, she's always right. She has covered the requested changes pretty well, essentially what this is doing is replacing 48, what I would call town-owned style dwellings, or duplex, slash triplexes, Deborah put it, with 48 multifamily dwellings. This request is made, and I sent each of you an email over the weekend, I'd hope to get that out sooner, I apologize, but the genesis of making this request on behalf of the owners, as you all are aware, Seersstone, the CCRC, has been under development for an extended period of time. Bill Sears, who's kind of the mastermind of Seersstone, the CCRC side, is very passionate about Sears Farm, about the subject matter of age-in-place options, and longer care living facilities in general. And so what you see before you tonight is a request to do two things, one is to respond to a change in market conditions with respect to the style of dwellings that the retirement community is looking for in communities like Seersstone, and second, to provide for more affordable options. And so with respect to the style, what, and I apologize, I'm getting some feedback on my end, what the owners have experienced is that the multifamily option is increasingly attractive, really across all of the residential sector, if you look at a lot of the residential developments that have moved forward, you're seeing a lot of multifamily, that's especially true for millennials, which are not part of this, but for retirees, and for the senior community, as folks look to move out of their single-family homes, and move into, you know, options that provide for shared amenities, that provide for maintenance of the common areas, so they don't have to do those things. A development like this, you know, presents the opportunity to put parking under the buildings, which is what the plan is to do, and so you've got covered parking with direct access to elevators, again catering to the needs of seniors who would like, you know, you want to keep them out of the weather to the extent possible, and it's safer, quite frankly. And so, that's one of the primary motivators. The second is affordability. The aging community, the boomer community in the town of Cary is aging into retirement, and barrier to entry, I think I mentioned in the emails to you all, there's a barrier to entry in all new residential dwelling in the town of Cary right now because of the cost. It is just tough to find a decent for-sale product, and this is going to be for-sale, it's tough to find a for-sale product that is affordable to a broad cross-section. What Mr. Sears is trying to do here is to provide an option that provides greater flexibility, that reduces the cost, and potentially captures a greater cross-section of the retirement community in the town. So those are really the two primary motivators for why he wants to make this change. From a you standpoint, again, you're taking 48 units and replacing it with 48 different units, it's just a different style. I do want to point out, as Deborah mentioned, this area here in the middle is a water feature, and there's 7,500 square feet of recreational amenity that is being provided, that will be for the benefit of residents of this portion of the CCRC. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions that you all might have, and again, we respectfully request you all support of the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our presenters? Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will. I move that the board forward case number 15 REZ 25 to town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable, and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sir?
Being one of those retirees, almost, I think this is a great use of the land that's there, it's kind of a no-brainer, 48 for 48, just a little bit different look, so I'll support it.
I'll support it because, one, as was mentioned, it's 48 for 48, and I think it's also, as we get into particularly some of these master plan developments like this, there's some flexibility, looking to see where the market is going, and moving from that duplex to the attached, to basically a multifamily style fits that, and I think that the town of Cary needs as many housing options, particularly affordable housing options, for the growing retirement community as we can possibly have in the market.
I think I might have to recuse myself from this one, because my company was, at one point, involved with this development, so I will, I don't know the proper way to do that, but...
Well, the proper way, before we took this up, would be to make a motion to recuse you.
Oh, did I do that in the wrong order?
We can interrupt this to do that? So if someone other than you would move to recuse you from this case, then we could vote on that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'd be looking for anyone else to do that.
I move to recuse Nancy from this case.
Would someone care to second that? All in favor of recusing Nancy for the time being? Aye? The only other thing is, you can't be up here with us now.
Oh, sorry, okay.
You must go in that wide expanse of empty seats. Ryan and Corey, right. Okay, now we can go back to what we were doing. And there was a motion on the floor, is there any more discussion on that motion? Would all those in favor of 16 REZ, oh, I'm sorry, 15 REZ 25, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries eight to nothing, now...
I'll make a motion that we bring Nancy back.
I'll second.
All those in favor of bringing Nancy back?
Aye.
So how long are pregnant cars do we have on the second?
Okay, learned that, pass us.
And getting cookies.
Do you want Girl's Cup cookies?
We are now on to 16 REZ 06, our last one of the evening.
This is a really complicated case. It's 0.12 acres, located off of Stevens Road and Lily Orchard Drive, which is a new road, it doesn't even show here. There's an annexation case associated with this that will go to town council, subject properties highlighted here in yellow, it's heavily wooded right now, it's in a stream buffer, according to Cary's GIS maps, there's a site plan infir review that also shows it's in a stream buffer. It is intended to be open space, the land use plan is low-density residential, the surrounding neighborhood is being developed as R8 conditional use. Rather than put zoning conditions on this tiny little sliver of land, which will be open space, the proposed zoning is RR Resource Recreation, which means there's not going to be any buildings on it, and we didn't need to tie it to any zoning conditions. So this is just a little cleanup, annexation, and application of a Cary zoning designation that best suits the use of the land.
So Cary's the applicant on this one, correct?
No, the applicant is the developer doing the adjacent residential neighborhood, they kind of deferred to staff to handle it for them, so they are not present tonight.
No questions, I assume, on this one? A motion coming?
I'll make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I'll move that the board forward case number 16 REZ 06 to town council, the recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable, and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion warranted on this one?
No.
Then all in favor of 16 REZ 06, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. My thanks to everyone for putting in the long hours this evening, so if someone would make a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
And all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you and good night.